I'll second.
All those in favor of adopting the adjournment?
Aye.
Aye.
If they can probably be saying aye, it's unanimous. Receded positions, we did. Okay, old business.
Mr. Chairman, the request would be for the commission to hold a continued public hearing and continue the item until the 2nd of November. If there is anyone who wishes to speak, they could, but you would continue the hearing to the 2nd of November.
Okay. And do we need to make clear that we made no recommendation, we just did this? It's already been to whoever it's been to. No, it's been to the AAB, it hasn't been to the BCA.
It's been to you, and I believe we had some information about the AAB. So no action would be taken by the commission today.
No action, all right. Can you do this motion?
That one? I move that the Planning Commission recommend to the Board of Zoning Appeals that various application of V-1573-15 and V-1574-15 for 419 and 421 West Broad Street be deferred to the November 12th, 2015 BZA meeting.
I believe it's November 2nd.
And November 2nd.
Oh, November 2nd, and November 12th for the BCA.
Okay. November 2nd and 12th.
Do we have a second?
A second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 So we are deferred until November 2nd. New business? Other business, none? Okay, the complicated approval of the minutes. Motion to approve the September 8th, 2015, as amended minutes.
I so move.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion to approve the 21 September, 2015 minutes.
I so move again.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I was abstained that day, so.
Abstained.
Abstained, okay. So, the 5th of October.
Has problems.
Yeah, so I had a question. We'll go ahead.
Well, I don't have a question, I have an actual, I have a problem in that if you look on the September 21st, other business, the first two paragraphs there are repeated on October 5th, other business, so they don't belong there. So there's two paragraphs under other business, one that starts, the chair makes reported, and then Mrs. Teetz noted at 134 and 139. I think they got carried over from the past amendments by accident. So they need to be pulled. And then the other problem I have is, on the previous page, at 123, at the A, the A Presentation of Renovation Plan, well, it basically says what happened. Mr. Navani responded to questions from commissioners. I have a little issue with it, because we actually had some real questions and some real.
Right, we did.
We had real issues with the value of spending that much money for that landscaping. And I just felt like there should have been.
And the use of the money.
And the use of the money.
And the source.
I mean, the fact that it's going to be, like, a good chunk of it, like, over 50,000 just goes to move in a transformer, so. And the fact that the money's being used from our land fund, which really should be buying land for development, so.
So the minutes do not capture the substance of our conversation. So perhaps what we should do is make a motion not to approve the minutes until we've had a chance to re-review them after they've been.
Yeah, give Ms. Gia a chance to look at them.
Right. I'll move that, that we defer, or that we.
Defer the approval of the minutes. All those in favor? Oh, no, I need a second.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, it's unanimous, the 5th of October minutes, not approved, deferred. Outstanding. Planning Commission reports.
I've got one. I attended the visioning session Saturday morning up at the schools, and it was really, really very interesting. It was all on power and geothermal, solar. It was all on energy. And it was very useful, and all kinds of ideas that came up. Wide variety of ideas and potential ways that we can provide the energy for that property when it does get developed. It was really a good one.
I'll just follow up. I couldn't go, but I sent my 10th grader to go.
Right, she was there.
And my husband, who also kept texting me, like, why'd you make me go to this? And they reported back to me, and I think the exciting thing is that, you know, we don't have a big past history of being very green or very environmentally friendly when we build our own facility. So it's great to see us have a meeting where, obviously, the school administration and the school board are embracing.
And we've had that dialogue.
Right, so I was excited. You know, having a session on that, at that level suggests to me that they're starting to embrace it the way we want to embrace it for our city.
And one of the most interesting comments was the fact that they really thought that anything lead silver is just ridiculous. It should be much, much higher, and much more thinking ahead, and that, you know, so many of the things could pay for themselves within 10 or 15 years. And I think it's something that we need to look at for being quite bold, and I hope we don't lose that vision due to nitpicking about everything on earth whenever anything comes in, but, because that usually happens.
Anyone else? Anything? Planning Commission reports? Planning Director's report.
Mr. Chairman, I'll keep this brief, but on that same theme of the future of our schools, just wanted to call out the work of Lauren Bruce, who did a lot of work getting that panel together, along with Mary Beth Connolly. And I understand there were more than 150 folks at the session, and you had some real top experts in the field. So it was a really, really good discussion and exposure to important ideas about energy and looking ahead at the future. Also, some of you may have noticed there was a balloon that was being raised from the water tower the city has, near the, Fairfax Water has, near Eden Center. Fairfax Water is going to need to improve that water tower and raise its height so that you get sufficient pressure, and that we can have a better system. So they were doing some testing to see what that might look like. There'll be a presentation at some point in a work session with City Council. It will need a zoning ordinance amendment, text amendment, has the ability, I think, to improve service significantly, but also the possibility of being able to provide a landmark for the city, or water towers don't have to be just attractive things. But some of you, if you heard about that or saw that, they were doing some picture-taking to see what it might look like. So just wanted to keep you in the loop on that. We'll let you know more as we hear more about it, but I think they are planning to go to City Council at some point and do a briefing, and see if that can move forward sometime in the next year or so. In the interest of time, I'll stop right there, because we've got a lot of work ahead of us and folks waiting. Thank you.
Before we entertain the motion to adjourn, how are we going to do this logistically? We're coming up here. Should we all go down there? And I ask partly just to know how we're doing the.
Well, I think we're going to try to have things on the screens.
So we should stay up here?
... my folks up here.
Sit there. That'd be good. And if you're on the table.
Decision made.
Right.
Keep your mics on.
And Russ is at home watching, so.
Yeah.
Keep your mics on, would be helpful.
Yeah, Russ' mic, yes. By the way, it's his birthday today.
I know.
Yep, so happy birthday, Russ.
Happy birthday, Russ. All right, motion to adjourn.
Russ, I mean.
Russ.
I knew that guy. It's not your birthday.
Motion to adjourn.
I so move.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 We are officially adjourned. All right, item one.
... work session.
It was interesting, when there was this, with geothermal up on that property, we could see a geothermal distributing.
Really?
Perhaps across the road, too. We're seeing you have.
Hi. Okay, so.
I have a, 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 a presentation.
Well, is the presentation, how long is it? And is it changes since the last presentation? Or is it, what is it?
It's got changes that were done to the plan. I want to confirm whether you know about those changes or not. I can skip that part of the presentation. And then it adds information that we can discuss in that quarter of the staff. Now, the voluntary concessions. Some of the comments and questions that have been presented to us, we can answer. That's part of the presentation. So it depends on what information you want us to know.
Well, so here is what we have to, you have, we have 58 minutes to get through essentially the staff report, so everybody's questions on the staff report are addressed. So if you can do that this way, or we can just start item one. And I know people, and so what happened last time is we ended up getting to, sort of, when we got to the questions, we were a little short. So I'd almost rather do the questions, but if you've got a presentation, maybe you'll hit some of it.
Let's do the questions, and I can go to a slide and tell you some questions. Would you like to do that?
Yes, let's do that. And I think what we're going to start is maybe on the question of the theater tax, because we've got Rick here, but he's got a scoot. So I'd rather hit that on the front end of this thing than on the back end.
Sounds good.
And I'm looking for that.
Number 13 on the snap.
Wait.
It's on page 7.
You guys stay up here. We want them to come here, or just wait till.
It's the problem.
I like it.
Well, if they've got presentation-related things.
Yeah, if he's on the presentation, you can wait till after.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, so I'm messing us up here a little bit, but if planning commissioners have questions after we do the theater tax, let's just take it from item one, and we'll go from there. Take it away, sir.
My name is Mr. Chairman.
No, thank you for coming.
I'm prepared to attempt to answer questions for, why we're looking into theater tax. Questions? How would you like to?
So I think we'd like to sort of understand better why we're looking into theater tax. I think understand as completely as we can the theater tax itself relative to the project. I think there were some planning commissioners who have always had sort of a question as to why we're doing the theater, and now to find out that the theater won't carry its own weight and in fact needs tax subsidies is a question.
All right.
So however that can be addressed, you.
Okay, well, I'll start with why we're considering a theater tax. And it's because, you probably know the history as well as I do, that the theater was a later-stage addition to the commercial mix. It was included to address the requirement of a second commercial anchor. As the developers could explain, and probably have already, they felt the only solution for including the theater was to put it underground, as well as the parking for the theater. And this has added considerable extra expense to the commercial component of the project. In addition to that, theaters are not a category of tenant that will pay market rent for retail space. They enjoy leverage of lower lease rates for their status as desired anchors for commercial shopping centers. Now, again, the developers may have already stated the case, but we're told that the subsidy is an important assumption in their pro forma. That's validated by our outside consultant, and it's critical to obtaining project financing. Among the extraordinary costs that the subsidy would offset are construction costs, again, of the building, the theater portion of the building and the parking underground. Also, the developer is sharing in the cost of tenant improvements, which are very expensive. And at the same time, anticipated rent for the theater space will be lower than market The specific request that was recently modified, there was a second submittal, would request a subsidy for 20 years. The first 15 years would be at a full 10% of the ticket price charged at the theater. The remaining five years would be at 9% of the ticket price. The Virginia statute behind this allows for up to 10% tax. Our local ordinance will have to be amended. Currently, it only provides for two cents on a movie theater ticket. And that has never, that hasn't been charged since the state theater last showed a movie. So it would be relatively simple for council to make that required change. The question has come up at City Council meetings, and I can address that, is why not just raise the ticket price? Why go through the steps of creating a tax? Again, the developers can add to my response, but I think the answer is twofold. One, from a marketing standpoint, the operator would be in a better position with consumers to quote "ticket prices" without the tax equivalent amount added to the base price of a ticket. In terms of the developer's perspective, the admissions tax and rebate has greater value to the developer and the theater owner if it doesn't have to be treated as taxable gross revenue. Now, we are still awaiting a formal written report from our consultants, Bull and Smart. They had to go back and amend a report that was pending because the request had changed, and our consultant needed to look at their pro forma again. And he will have his written report ready this week in time for the EDA meeting, which is next Tuesday. And that is one of the topics that they'll consider on Tuesday, the 27th. And the EDA is considering that because they would be part of a three-party agreement, the city, the developer, and the EDA. This could potentially be structured similar to the way the BJ's agreement was, where the EDA was essentially a conduit for the subsidy. Taxes collected by the city, and then forwarded to the EDA, and then from the EDA to the I can stop there and see if you have any questions.
I have a question. How much are we talking about in terms of, like, per year? Total.
Well, based on information from the developer, and I won't go into the entire formula because it might give away some information about ticket prices and volume, but the amount that we're looking at is about $346,000 a year for the full 10%. And that can be contrasted with gross revenue and net revenue that we anticipate just for the theater portion. And those numbers are $265,000 per year in gross revenues, anticipated $122,000 a year in net revenue. Just for, yeah, parsing the theater piece out of it, the underlying real estate, the taxes that would be associated with the theater, personal property, sales, meals.
That was my only question.
You know, just listening to what you just went through, and then reading through this, a couple of things come to mind. I'm not really sure if this project needs a theater, one. And I'm not convinced that all of these economic gyrations are going to give us a better product for this project. Then lastly, the one thing that I'd like to know is, do we have a prospective tenant for this theater? And do we, has the tenant done a market analysis to see, do we know if there's been a market analysis to see if we can attract these tenants?
If we can attract. Typically. I would defer, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Typically, you know, when a movie theater is going to, you know, a certain area, they do a massive, massive market analysis. But, you know, I'm not sure if Falls Church is a place where, in a movie theater, would like to come to, because we've got, you know, you've got Mosaic, and then you've got Tyson's Corner, which draws a huge crowd. But I'm not sure if Falls Church is a place for a movie theater. I mean, I don't know. It's, I'm not convinced.
Okay. I don't pretend to have the information that the developer has in terms of the level of interest, or precisely who they're talking about right now, but I can say that for quite some time, a theater has been something that the city has wanted, and we have approached developers who have brought projects forward to try to incorporate a theater in some of the projects that we've seen. And until now, until the Mason Row proposal, we haven't had any success in doing that. Now, I guess arguments could be made that there are better sites within the city, but either the land has not been assembled, sites approved for development have been too physically constrained, or the theater use hasn't been the right fit for a proposed development program. So this particular proposal is one that's progressed farther than any, at least in the 12 years that I've been working here. If the project, for whatever reason, does not proceed, I don't think we have an answer as to whether we'll see another theater proposal in the city, but I can tell you that there are limitations on where theaters are placed. If my understanding is correct, they draw a three-mile radius around theaters, and that's an exclusive area for showing first-run movies. So potentially, we could have a theater in Bailey's, Seven Corners, or McLean, and we would be out of luck in terms of being able to attract a theater that shows first-run movies.
Just a final question. What is the attraction of movie theaters? Why does Falls Church need a movie theater? When, you know, if you look at the way that people are entertained these days, movie theaters are not really the big economic engines that they used to be. You've got Netflix, you've got all these other things that, you know, people potentially go to. And the fear that I have is, we're trying to jam a movie theater into the city, which is going to fail within a couple of years. I mean, that's my opinion, but. And it's not based on any economic analysis.
And I don't claim to be an expert, but the model that they're looking at is a dine-in theater concept, and they are becoming pretty popular in various places. The idea is to make it an entire evening event, where you can eat and drink in your seat and watch a film. It's not like just paying $10 or $12 for a ticket. You're going in there with the expectation that you're probably going to have dinner there, if you drink, maybe have a couple of drinks. That is the attraction of this type of movie theater, as opposed to just a run-of-the-mill screen with seats. This is what they've been working on. And again, they can address it better, but it's my understanding they've talked to four or five different operators, a various spectrum of quality, if you will, from higher-priced tickets and meals and accommodations, to others that have also been successful in the market but are less expensive to attend.
Just to follow up on that, I've had a couple of concerns about the theaters also, and I know that it always goes back to certain council members requested it as a second anchor. And, you know, with the project being so large, that, you know, there's some thinking that if, without the theaters, that maybe the project would be a little bit smaller with fewer apartments. But be that as it may, and I know we'll probably hear more from the developers, but I would imagine the lease would contain, you know, years within the lease, so that if they did go out of business, they would still be responsible for the lease, I would assume. Right or no?
That's correct.
No. If they went into bankruptcy, who pays?
Yeah.
Who paid Circuit City's rent when they went bankrupt? How'd that work?
But one of my concerns is the fact that the type of, you know, the undergrounding and everything like that is so expensive, and what else could it be used for? You know, that just, and I'd like to hear some more from the developers. You know, there's so much that I do like about this, and the project, and there's so many changes that I really, really like. I just still am a little concerned about this part of it. And I think the voluntary concessions have changed quite a bit, and are much more positive. Thank you.
So are you asking if we can lose the theater? Is that the?
I said, what would happen if? And I think.
I'm going to answer some of the questions.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Melissa.
They're not rhetorical.
Yeah, I'll add to it. I mean, I actually do think we should lose a theater, and I am a big movie goer. On Friday night, my son and I saw two movies at AMC 16, at Tyson's. We ran between one to the other. We're big on IMAX screen kind of movies, and we have tickets for Friday night for another big movie that's coming out. So I totally think there is a population that wants to go to movies, and I think it's getting harder and harder to drive to Tyson's and other places, so that, but I'm not a big believer in the movie theater at that location. I think that there are other locations in the city closer to the 29-7 intersection that would be a better location for a movie theater. I also, the big thing to me is, in the memo we got on October 15th, one of the things that was talked about in here was reducing the number of rental units, the proposed 340. And one of the things that's said in here is that the residential density is needed to financially support the Mason Row mixed-use project with the significant amount of commercial uses. And so I guess my feeling is that, I have no problem with the admissions tax if we were to have a theater. I understand that there's a lot of hard costs involved, and that the theater is not willing or does not have to pay for those hard costs. They know they can find someone that's going to pay for it. So I totally. So I totally, I have no problem with that part. But I do think that the project would be better without the theater, if we could bring down the number of units and bring the height down some, I just think it would work better there. I just think, right now, the project's just too big. And I feel like the movie theater is a big reason why it's so big, because you need a lot of parking for it. I think that it increased the number of units we had to have to pay for that parking. So I, I mean, I absolutely like to see the theater out of there, and I'd love to see the theater somewhere else.
I have a quick question related to that, and I don't know who could answer it, but I think the theater got there because of the need for two.
Second anchor.
A second anchor, and the theater has created some heartache. If, and I can't imagine, we're going to vote on this in two weeks, that the theater can go away, but if it did, would we then be like, okay, what's the second anchor? Or are we saying, hey, you could drop the theater, drop 40, 50 apartment units, and we don't care about a second anchor? I mean, I guess I'm wondering, those that don't want the theater, do you also want a second anchor? Does that not matter?
I do not need a second anchor. I think that if you have the hotel and the amount of retail they're talking about, and the, the advantages of the Market Square and the events there, I don't think we need the second anchor. I just don't.
Well, the one thing, the one thing I was going to say to you, answer your question with, was, going back to what Lindy had, had mentioned, had said, was, was that we do need to find out exactly what happens when, or if, the movie theater goes belly up. What happens to the space? What, what do we intend to put in that space? Who pays for, who pays the rent for that space? So I think that's a question that we need answered. I mean, for me, that's a question that I need answered if I were to vote for the movie theater.
Right. It's not just the storefront. It's a whole, you know, underground complex.
So let's talk about the theater for a minute.
Rob, you have a question?
Or is there another question? So your question's a very good one. There's been quite a bit of research done on theaters in this market space. Theaters are growing. Theaters are developing entertainment components to add to the movie experience, and they're becoming quite successful in that. Some theaters are serving complete dinners in, in the theater. Theaters are doing programming for specialty events and groups. Some, some theaters are mixing, not only specialty screen programming, but also specialty live programming. So there's a lot going on in the theater category. Now, going back to the market demand for theater at Mason Row. Mason Row, all of the theaters' market research have concluded that Mason Row is what, is in an area which is called a donut hole. And I think somebody was talking about this earlier. You've got AMC in Tyson's Corner, you've got Angelica out in Mosaic, and you've got a Regal Theater in Boston. And Mason Row happens to be three miles and a tenth or so from the Tyson's Corner Theater. They're about 3.3 miles from the Mason, from the Mosaic theaters, and they're about, I think, five and a half miles from the Regal. And so the theater industry is looking at this donut hole as an ideal location for a theater to go into, to compete for the overall marketplace. And these theaters, all, many of them, do different things. I should clarify and say that what I'm talking about generally is the first-run movies, and then the theaters do different things to be competitive. And what do they do? Well, one of the aspects that is very important to the theater's success is being part of a certain type of project. The theaters need to have a project that has a variety of restaurants and retail, a destination that is well-parked, that people will come to and have a variety of things to do, so it's not repetitive for them. And so when people go to Mosaic to watch a movie, they have many different things they can experience when they go for their night out to the movies. So each project, and for Angelica, Mosaic provides some competitive advantages over other projects in certain sections of the metro area, whether it's Regal's projects in Boston. You have a different environment with the AMC Theater in the Tyson's Corner Mall. So that is a factor. The other thing, as I was saying earlier, the other component for competitiveness between the theaters is the way they structure their offerings. So, again, the dine-in theater concepts, as opposed to the AMC theater concept that you, that's more traditional in Tyson's Corner. The Angelica experience relative to, with a heavier focus on the non-first-run movies, you know, they do a lot of other types of movies that are not the, the blockbuster films. And they have an experience that they provide with their bar and what you can take to the, to the seat, in addition to what you experience at the AMC, for example, with just your regular types of concessions. So all those things go into how the theaters differentiate between themselves and become competitive. Again, the donut hole, the types of offering, and the project. Mason Row is providing a, a project that makes a theater competitive relative to what AMC is doing, for example, at Tyson's Corner Mall, or what Regal's doing out there at the mall in, in Boston. The, the other aspect is that Mason Row has got enough critical mass that the theaters believe that they can drive their customers to this location because of the way Mason Row is designed and what the other offerings around the theater are. So there's been quite a bit of effort and discussion about the donut hole concept in the market, what Mason Row offers in amenities surrounding the theater, and what the synergy is to attract the theater's customers to this location. And then, of course, there are the features of the projects, parking and access and, and what have you. But, but I can tell you that, from being involved in the discussions with the theaters, they are extremely high on the opportunity to come into a project like this in the donut hole. And they don't see very many opportunities inside the Beltway where a donut hole exists for a theater to come into, so.
So I have a quick, in the interest of time, I think we're going to move on a little bit. I just want to make sure I understand the math on the 346,000 really quickly. So that's revenue that we, that would go, if the theater were located at a different project where, that was not keeping the, the subsidy, that would go to the city in one way or another? If we, if we collected the tax?
If we collected the tax and there was a similar project with a, a movie theater, yeah.
So 346,000 is what this is costing the city?
Well, let me back up. That's based on their assumptions for volume and ticket price.
Yeah, okay. Annually.
Annually, right.
So approximately one cent on the tax rate is one way to think about it. So what are some?
I would add, if I can, that that's not a tax that we currently receive.
Well, that's, okay. So what are some uses that would go in the theater if the, unfortunately, the theater went bankrupt?
And follow up on the lease, too.
Okay. Let me, let me, let me just clarify something else also. The theaters are all large corporations. These are not franchisees. These are not companies that have just a few units. So the, the lease that we ultimately do with a theater is going to be backed by a sizable corporation, which will be guaranteeing the base term of the lease, which will be 20 years. Most of the time, if you, if you see a theater close, it is 85, 90% of the time, re-tenanted with another theater concept, a newer theater. Remodeling is done, and new technology is brought in. But that's the kind of scenario that you see, is theaters that are old, that close, and the successful companies come in, release that space, and reconfigure it.
Okay. And so, well.
But other, other, other uses for theater space outside of another theater taking that space are gyms, for example, fitness centers.
And so will you?
Some, some urban areas do below-grade retail projects, things like that.
Okay. So you are at?
Sometimes also, I will say, you will see in the urban, more dense areas, the larger type retailers that want to get into the, to the marketplace will go for larger box space that's underground and re-tenant it, reconfigure it.
So you are at letter of intent with a specific chain?
We are negotiating a letter of intent with more than one right now, and we're going to make a decision based on how it turns out, which one we're going to lease with.
And, okay. And all of those, you've, you've, you've said to all of those, we, we cannot do your subsidy? Or you've said to all of them that we absolutely know we're going to get the, the subsidy?
I'm not sure if I understand your question.
How are you negotiating with the other chains? Are you negotiating as if you're going to get this 10%? Or are you still trying to?
Well, we, we have to have the 10% in order to make the financing work. We're not negotiating with the.
You don't, you don't have a deal with the, with the tenant, so you're presupposing you're getting this.
Correct.
As a revenue stream.
Right. We can't make it work otherwise. We understand the, the theater industry and what the rates are, and what the costs are to build them out. We're not, we're negotiating as best of terms as we can directly with the theaters.
And that just happens to involve a subsidy from the city?
Yeah. It will. We, we project that it will, because we understand what the theater market pays.
Okay.
And what it costs to build a theater.
And so, switching gears, if we were to suggest to you that, that this would be a very tough approval process with the theater, you're not prepared to lose the theater. Do I understand that correctly?
We're not prepared to lose the theater because of the draw aspects that the theater brings to the project. There are a number of tenants that are talking to us now that understand that this is going to be an entertainment-anchored project. And so it, it influences the tenant rents and the tenant mix. You know, you have a, a very high-quality retail project when you anchor it with a theater. And so we've gone way down the road with that, and the tenants are expecting that we will anchor the project with a theater.
Okay.
So it influences the, the, the types of restaurants and the types of boutiques and things like that, because they are, they are looking at the theater as a draw of their customer to the destination. You know, it's, it's all about destination retail, which is, gets into the concept of how you anchor the retail. So it's a big factor on the numbers that we are projecting and, and the kind of tenants we're talking to. Big factor.
So your, your anchor of a theater, you would suggest, means that you're able to command significantly higher rents than a grocery-anchored center? Or, let's just use the, the?
Yeah, yes. A theater anchor is able to attract higher rents than a grocery anchor. The theater anchor, and it depends on what kind of retail center you're doing. If it's a service-oriented retail center, I would say that a grocery anchor would drive those tenant rents perfectly fine. But if you're looking at a more food, more restaurant type of destination, a theater is going to drive tenants and drive rents better than a grocery store. Because a grocery store, customer is coming in to get their groceries and they're leaving. The theater customer is a customer that tends to stay longer and experience other tenants more so.
So your rents, you would think, will be comparable with Mosaic?
We do.
Which has both a theater and a Target and a grocery store?
We do.
Really? You think, you think you'll be comparable there? Okay.
Well, you know, we are also closer in to the marketplace than Mosaic is. Mosaic is further out, and therefore, you know, they're building a, they're in a, in a more remote area, they're building a new city there. So we've done a lot of analysis on Mosaic. Our partner is building and has assets in Mosaic. We know it very, very well. And we spent a lot of time analyzing how to create the tenant mix for Mason Row, how to lay it out, and how to anchor it. And theater's a big part of that.
Okay. So does that, then, just switching to item one, and I'm going to turn it over to everybody else here. If we go to the pending issues, massing scale, residential density, if we were to say to you, you know, okay, you, you're, it seems like we can't do anything with this theater and the, the tax, so essentially, we're co-investing now with you, but we got to do something about, you know, the overall massing and the overall density, your answer is the same as it is with the theater?
Well, that is a substantial redesign of the whole project. You are talking about removing the main retail anchor, which is going to affect our analysis and pro forma on the kind of tenants, the rents, you know, it's, it's a substantial change. You know, again, this is a, this is a theater that is, is an urban theater. You're talking about eight to six screens, it's not the 12 to 14-screen theaters. We've been able to work with theater companies that do smaller urban theaters and come up with a parking plan and a design that would allow us to do a, a smaller than, than, than what you might be familiar with, theater type of concept. We're probably 50 to 60% the size of, of the typical theaters. So we've put a lot of effort in designing the theater so that it's small, so that it has less seats, which requires less parking. And the project works well. Again, you know, when you start looking at a project like this and you say, well, what happens if you move the theater? Well, what happens if you move the Market Square? What, what happens if you don't do these kind of restaurants, you do this? Well, that affects what the other tenants think about your project and who's coming in. That, that's a radical shift. So you got to go back to the tenant world and see what kind of tenants you're going to be dealing with if you go unanchored or if you don't have a theater anchor. So it's, you know, it's, you're talking about a major.
I appreciate what you're saying, but it's, it's, I appreciate what you're saying. So this is not the first time. It's item one. Every meeting for the past two years I've been to, this item is discussed. So it's not like we just came up with, hey, this project might be a little bit too big, you know, now as we get down to the 11th hour. This is, like, we've been talking about this. Is that fair?
Some folks have been talking about that, that's correct. Some folks are talking about the value of the theater. I mean, we, we're getting commentary from lots of different, I'm just answering your question about what the theater.
Well, let me just say, as, as a planning commissioner, I was at the farmer's market, you know, this past weekend, four people stopped me. No one said, you know, this project isn't big enough, needs to be bigger. No one said that, right? So, so the. So the suggestion that you're hearing about the density for the first time is, you know, is not necessarily true. Now, I understand we have a complication with the theater relative to whether or not we want one or two anchors. I think there are certainly some issues that I personally would have with subsidizing, essentially making the taxpayer, City of Falls Church, a co-investor in what I think is not a business that's going to have a 10-year lifespan. I'm not sure I would put my own money into this and yet, as a taxpayer, I'm being sort of dragged into this. So that's a separate concern, the theater tax. But the existence of the theater and its relative impact on the density, I think you've heard us talk about that before. So, you know, we're trying to flesh out the ability to make changes to this project and if you're saying there are absolutely none, that's fine, certainly your prerogative, that's why we have these work sessions.
Well, if you were to remove the theater, you're looking at revenues, commercial revenues coming down. You've got four and a half acres off of West Broad Street. You've got, you still have considerable amount of underground structured parking. I see very little effect pulling the theater out on the rest of the massing of the project because, again, you've got substantial structured parking, you've got a hotel that's not paying for its land. So I don't, I think the delta difference at the end of the day is going to be very, very small on the effect of the rest of the massing of the project. And now, you're looking at a project that also is not anchored with the theater and has some very different dynamics.
It's int-- Well, I will leave that for another time.
So do you want, do I just start at the top and run through all mine?
Questions, you have questions and I know you've had questions, so.
I have some questions. And I could talk about that theater stuff more, but I won't. So I think what robs me getting at, and I think we know the answer, is 340 units. I get a feeling if you magically came back in two weeks with something that had 40 to 50 units fewer, even if you kept the theater, I think you'd get a lot more support. I get the sense that's impossible, so I won't even ask you about it. But that, so that's on number one. I mean, I just think, you know, to me, it's not as, it's a similar or even lower density than some other recent projects. I understand it's a lot of units, it's a big site. I know it's a big issue for some people, it's not too big of an issue for me. Although I do think if it had been addressed a year ago, it would have made this whole process easier. For building mass and scale and height, I mean, I think, obviously, if you lost a bunch of units, that'd be one way to fix that. But one thing that, you know, one of the rendering shows, if you're driving west on Broad Street, the part that's right up on Broad Street has no windows. That could be like a site plan fix, right? I mean, it's, it seems like a stairwell. It's just sort of a weird, big, blank brick or whatever wall. But, and in the staff report, they mentioned trying to step back from the St. James Church property, which is that same thing. I know we've had you pushing the mass all around the site, so I assume there's not a lot of options there, but I think, you know, I think that's still some concern there. I don't know that you can do much in two weeks. And I think if you had to have the mass somewhere, that's probably the place to have it. Number four in the staff report about the Park Avenue, I think the Park Avenue treatment is a lot better. I think everyone kind of agrees with that. It's still a little bit weird because it has that townhouse look, but there's not enough space to put real or fake stairs. The staff report mentions maybe eliminating on-street parking, which I think would get you murdered, so you probably can't do that. But I do wonder if there's, I mean, I don't know, they've mentioned, are there any other ideas? If you guys came back with any kind of other idea, I think that would help that a lot. Although I do think that the way it is now, it's probably doable. It's a little bit unusual, but not too bad. There's a couple of things in here that I just, it seems like the staff is saying like, "Hey, this is pretty much done, but we just don't have the final stuff." So like, like on number 10, the on-trash loading, they talked about having a plan about when the trash picked up. I mean, we're down to the wire here. So in two weeks, we're going to vote, I guess. And if there's still things on the list that the staff is like, "Hey, we don't have the final thing," I think some people, maybe me included, would just be like, "This is just crazy." So I think all the little things that are still out there, I really think, unless there's a real good reason that you can explain, you got to tighten those up or people are just going to, you know, it's been going on this forever. So those are little ones, we should be able to do that. Trying to go fast. I know parking came up, I mean, the staff seems to be okay with the parking. It seems like the retails, the commercials parked almost the code and the residential's 19% combined, it's not too bad. It seems okay to me. I mean, one of the things I noticed, and I think I missed the meeting we had about the parking, but, you know, the proposed ratio of 1.35 spaces per unit is within the average. I just don't know, I mean, I assume that the number of parking spaces per unit would depend heavily on the types of units because, you know, two bedrooms probably more likely have two cars than a one-bedroom. But, so I think personally parking seems okay. The retail plan seems weak. I'd love to see something impressive in a couple of weeks. You know, the streetscape is one where the staff comment is sort of like, "Hey, we've talked about it a million times, but we don't have it written down that you guys would do the streetscape." So I think tighten that up. And then, I had some questions which aren't, the staff report didn't talk about, but just about the proffers on the school capital cost. I know that number's moved around and I don't know who knows. The number they got settled on is, again, is a per-square-foot versus a per-unit, which is what we've done in the past. And I don't know who would be the one to talk about whether or not the number that's settled on is similar to what we've got in the past, if it's what we need for what we're expecting. I know it's a challenging target since the range is so broad in terms of what the number of students might be and therefore the impact. I also am concerned about the hotel. Apparently now, this hotel is potentially has four to eight students, which I assume we aren't getting any sort of a capital contribution for. And I don't know, is, are there ways to limit the extended stay to three months or something in an effort to make it a worthwhile extended stay hotel, but not allow people to essentially live there? Or is there some other way for us to? I just feel like the hotel is supposed to be a big fiscal driver. I think Rick probably just left. Good timing.
No, he's there. And that's come up, by the way, thank you very much for reminding me about that. That was a question from the Marriott. So we were always told that it's illegal to put your kid in schools from hotels. And so how is it now that these extended stay hotels are showing school kids?
We've got six.
That's a rhetorical question, but if you know the answer.
I'm not sure I do know the whole answer, but we did receive that information from the schools that as of a year ago in the fall, they were, I believe, counting six pupils at the Marriott who were there as a result of State Department subsidizing their use of the hotel.
How is that possible?
You know the size of the units of cowboy suites? Where Becky Whitman went, but she could probably answer that question.
Extended stay hotel, the average size of the room is, you know, something bigger than that.
While I'm up here, I can answer the question about the school capital.
Okay. Well, maybe there's something, Mr. Schneider, maybe this is something that staff could put towards the school administration. Why are we accepting students from extended stay because that's not considered to be a permanent residence? I know some people who stayed in there during, after the D'Arrocho took their roof off, but they used their regular address.
Yeah, yeah, and Oakwood had to go through a lot of stuff that you can only stay for a certain amount of time and so you can't be a hotel. They had to--
Because they're furnished and stuff.
Fulfill a bunch of obligations so that they were not considered to be a hotel. But it turns out, it doesn't matter, I guess. Just like to know.
Well, I do know that, I don't know if this holds for the Marriott, but homeless families have stayed--
In Stratford, yeah.
In Stratford.
Yeah, I don't know, it sounds to me like an attorney would be the one to know whether--
Had students from there due to homelessness.
But for whatever reason, there are some. And so if the hotel component is a big part of the fiscal model and how it's going to pan out, if we have eight students at the high end there, I mean, I don't know, is the hotel a money loser now? I mean, I think, and then if they're, if it is legal for someone to, I was speaking with the mayor the other day. His interpretation was if you're in Virginia for a day, you can go to school and--
No, we did include a range in our fiscal impact modeling between four and eight.
Okay, and so, but I guess what I'm saying is the hotel component specifically. I don't know if we've modeled just the hotel?
Yeah, we made an assumption that we would see four to eight pupils in the hotel.
Right, but I'm saying if you just had the hotel, because if the hotel itself, we did a model just for the hotel with the four to eight, not the whole project?
We added it to the pupil total.
Right, right, I know, but I'm saying if you didn't have the hotel--
I understand the question.
If you didn't have the hotel, you'd lose maybe eight students.
Yeah, potentially.
Would the net impact go up or down for the whole project?
The net impact would go up.
Well, I'm saying the hotel is a, let's say you couldn't have students in the hotel. One reason why we like hotels is because they really help their--
You're saying lose the hotel.
Right, I'm just saying if the hotel brings eight kids, right? Then that number--
Saying if the hotel is standalone, without the rest of the project, just looking at the hotel, does the hotel still make money with those eight people?
We can easily, we can do that.
Okay, and I assume it does, but my point is that if there is a way, maybe limit the extent of the stay. Like, I can see a family saying, "I'll stay in the hotel until my house gets built or whatever, send my kids to school, but if I can only stay here for three months or two months, then maybe that's not a good option, maybe I'll actually find a residence."
I'm not getting too deep into the Marriott houses that they're all owned. It's designed as a, you know, but if you're going to buy apartments, it's essentially all product. This is totally just a new product, a new bedroom. Small rooms. And I think that has a lot to do with who ends up at these new apartments.
Right, the rooms are 357 square feet, I think.
Well, the larger issue, which we don't have to get in the weeds on now, is that we've had circumstances. Pearson Square would be an example. We're trying to avoid this being an example where we're sort of think we're getting one thing and it ends up being something else, right? So this group said that it was okay for Pearson Square to go from condominiums to apartments, which retrospectively, that proved to be something we wish we wouldn't have done, perhaps. Well, but in the time, but so when we sort of asked this question, we got sort of circular answers and so that's why we're just trying to get to the bottom of it with the hotel.
Hotels do add a lot of economic value or particular taxes, you know, crew to the city. So we have saw these happen.
Yes.
Possibly we don't have a lot of, we have older hotels and so at new hotels, the key issue is just hotels.
Right.
You're not on a mic.
Oh, you're not using your microphone.
He said a lot of smart stuff.
Melissa, quick questions we have.
Real quick, Rick was going to answer my question about the, is the 508 per-square-foot proffer on the school capital costs in line with what we've gotten before, which was a per-unit number? How did we come to that number? Are the people that figure this stuff out satisfied with that number?
How it compares is that in the past, we've received $7,511 per apartment for school capital and this contribution is roughly $5,800. But keep in mind, they're also contributing cash for the library and parks, so that makes up the difference.
Right. And then, I think my final comment, which I brought up last time, which is a technical one, so we don't have to discuss, but, well, I have two final comments. One is, years before my time, we approved the city center, they got a special exception, the economy went south, the state kept extending all special exceptions. We got ourselves into a bad situation where it couldn't be built. We couldn't get a new developer in there to build something different without a big hassle. I don't know what ability we have to have whatever agreement we may come to with them expire if the project doesn't proceed, but I would encourage us to be smart about that. And then my final comment is just, I think we're slated to vote on this in two weeks. I know that some people want it to be much different, I assume that's not happening. But I would say that the sooner, you know, the sooner we get like, "Hey, this is our final best thing we're going to do," I think the easier it will be for us just to vote on it and see how it goes. So I think if we're trying to vote next week and they're still like, "Well, I don't know, they might be able to do that, might be able to do that," it's just not going to go well. That is all.
Okay, I will go fast. Andy covered a lot of the stuff that I had issues with in the staff report. Anyway, I mean, one other, like in terms of tidying things up, the vague language about Grove Avenue. I mean, it's clear you guys are going to work to realign the West Street, W-O-N-D crossing, but there's just some vague language about Grove. So either have something definitive, yes, we're going to help the Grove crossing or not. I don't like it when it's kind of up in the air that we're going to talk to people and maybe something will happen, maybe it won't. I'd rather it just be out if you're not going to do something there. And also, just going back to the school capital contributions, I just personally, I don't like that we're changing how we do the contribution. We've always done it by unit. I don't, I haven't heard any good argument why we're going to do it by per-square-foot. And I don't think having contributions to the library and parks makes a difference. We've had plenty of people do per-unit and then also contribute to parks. And it didn't stop them from doing per-unit, so. And also, I just agree with Andy. If it came back and suddenly 40 units were gone and it was down a level, I think it would be a spectacular moment. It would get rid of some of the hesitation some people have for the project because of the mass. And that's it.
Yeah, just a quick comment. I have to say that I was very disappointed when I read the staff report. And as I was reading it, you know, I was going through it and checking to see if most of the issues were resolved. And I ended up having, you know, so many unresolved issues with my pink pen. So it just begs the question, I mean, why are we still looking at this if all the issues that we discussed way back haven't been resolved yet? It seemed as if we're sort of in this cycle of not resolving issues. So, I mean, I can't, in good conscience, vote on a project that has so many issues that have not been resolved. And so that's my final statement, this--
And we've resolved many of those issues. We've been meeting with staff and one of the things I was prepared to do is to go through some of the comments on staff and tell you. And in the presentation, we were going to show you that we've resolved some of those issues, many of those issues.
Yeah, I'd like to see that because this is not good.
Yeah, well, many of those are resolved.
Any chance of having that online?
Probably an information sheet would probably be the easiest thing for you to follow. I have some of it here tonight.
On some of the slides, do you have a few slides that just talks about what was resolved?
Yes.
Could go through very fast? Would that be okay?
And then I just want to--
Rob?
Just a couple of--
Could I just, really, thank you for your explanation of, you know, as much as possible with the theater tax.
I still have concerns about affordable housing where they will still have to pay for parking. That is, and there's nothing in a resolution here that says that that's been settled. Because I think that is something that's, what it stated before is if everybody had to pay for parking, affordable housing people had to pay for parking. And, but I have concern about that since it is affordable housing. And the other thing is, is I've been online looking at Mill Creek. I always, I love floor plans. And all the dens have closets. And that, to me, means a bedroom. And I thought that that's what designates a room, a bedroom with a closet.
Well--
Then, the one-bedroom plus den. All the designs I saw from Mosaic.
Okay. Were closets? What designates, traditionally what designates a room is windows and--
Sorry, what?
What traditionally designates a room as a bedroom is windows and doors and we have neither of those.
And maybe the dens are interior?
They are, absolutely, yeah.
Just wanted to ask, thank you.
But if I can, just to answer some questions. Here in the slides, we are committing to specific measures on the transportation demand management program. And these are a list of those commitments that we're making. On-site vehicle sharing program, unbundled parking, the bus stop improvements, secure weather-- parking, the bus stop improvements, secure and weatherproofing bicycle parking. We're going to follow the standard that was presented to us by staff coming from Arlington County, and we're making that commitment. Kiosk for transportation, information kiosk, a hotel shuttle to the Metro Rail, which we have had as a...
Yeah, I think we've seen this, for the most part. Is there anything that you can do quickly, because we are up at 8:30?
Yeah, well, the point is, is that there was a question about what was ideas in the TDM and what we're committing to, and this is a list of what we're going to commit to, and we're going to make that clear in the report.
Right, I think we've seen that.
Same with the parking demand management.
Yep, seen that.
This is the retail plan. We've done a space plan for all of the buildings with square footages and types of tenants. And these are the commitments that we've discussed with staff about the retail plan that we'll be making. The first two bullets are really describing what Mason Rome is about, and this gets back to the theater, entertainment, food destination, pardon?
And I think that there was a lot of concern on the part of EDA with the 14-foot ceilings.
Well, I, I think they were asking about, they were asking about our commitment on heights for the retail.
Right, right.
And we're committed to having 14-foot clear as a minimum.
Clear.
Because of site slopes, there's a couple spots where we get within range of the 14 feet.
Are you good?
The, the, in the VCs, we're making a, the commitment to the theater, which we've been asked to do by council. We're committing to a minimum of 20,000 square feet of food and beverage retailers. We're committing to 50% of the entire retail space that you saw in the plan will have access to ventilation shafts for restaurants, and they will meet the standards that are required under the Sydney, City Ordinance for Restaurant Use. We are going to limit the amount of retail services to 15% of the total ground floor retail. We are also committing to a list that we and staff have worked on that is a list of prohibited retail uses that we will be committing to. The minimum ceiling height, as we just talked about, and we also are making a commitment to have 70% transparency on the retail frontages, and this is something that staff and, and we discussed and, and came up with this particular commitment. These are the community benefits, schools, library contribution, contribution to catch, city parks, bike share, and the post-development traffic study. The ADUs, we've made an adjustment there. We're going to provide units on-site. At one point in time, there was discussion about a cash contribution. We're also committed to being within the policy of the city, which is the 60% AMI to the 80% AMI range, and we're going to do, we've committed to doing 50%, 60% AMI, and 50%, 80% AMI. Streetscape improvements for the public street, we are making commitments to, and we're clarifying that with staff. We're making the commitment to provide the market square as is shown on the plans, underground in the utilities on the site, going to NGBS Silver Certification on the apartments and LEED certification for the hotel, that's also a commitment.
Storm drainage.
And the storm drainage and runoff on-site water quality treatment, all being committed to and specifically outlined on the CDP.
That's a...
Removal of contaminated soil is clarified, installation of specific vegetation, which is addressed specifically in the submission on the CDP. Stormwater capacity expansion is another commitment we're making specifically. Bicycle parking storage, I talked about earlier, going with the Class III for visitor bike racks and Class I bike storage, all consistent with Arlington County standards. That is a commitment that is going to be clear and being made. The transportation to management, demand management, we're committing to specific measures instead of just a list of ideas that were in the report. We're also committing to off-site improvements, road improvements, which we've talked about before, I think you're familiar with, realignment of the intersection of Park and West, the addition of lanes along West Street, turn lanes approaching West Broad Street, new turn lane on West Broad Street to turn on the eastbound, eastern access of the project, signalizing the, the intersection of Park and West, signalizing the intersection at the eastern section. And we've removed the cost cap, and our budget for the road improvements that we're committing to is about $940,000. We're adding several pedestrian crossways on West Street at Grove Avenue and on Northwest Street, and we're making a commitment to providing a new bus shelter on West Broad Street. So, and there are other comments in addition to what I had on the slide, that we've clarified with staff, and, and we've come a long ways and have gotten very clear with staff on what our commitment's going to be. And so, most of all of those things you're pointing to, we have spent time with staff and we've come to conclusion on.
May I just, I don't, I really don't think that stormwater management and all of that should be part of, considered a community benefit, because that's covered by code, it's covered by Chesapeake Bay EPA standards. So, I don't understand why that's, I think, extra undergrounding could be, but undergrounding of utilities is pretty much in code except for outside, but...
I agree with you. I just, I just put it on here to show you that we, we've made a commitment to that, because that was a question.
Yeah, I don't think that should be considered a community benefit, though.
I agree with you on that.
Ms. Rogers?
I'd like to echo the concerns of others who spoke prior to my contribution here. I'm particularly concerned about the cap, school capital contribution. I'd like to see it go back to the way it was. I don't think that the, the extra contributions to other things makes up for that. I'm wondering, are you going to charge for parking there?
We are not planning to charge for parking.
So, we don't...
Other than, other than the residential parking, there will be a charge for the residents.
So, residents.
To keep a car on the project, yeah.
Okay. And what does unbundled parking mean?
Unbundled parking is that you're going to separate out the parking space from the rent you're charging for the apartment, so people can have a choice to live in the apartment and not rent a parking space and not have a car. Or, if they choose to have a car parked on-site, they see what the cost is, which is an influencer to folks to maybe see if they can get by without having a car.
Okay, so...
Using mass transit or...
So, say, I'm, I'm just making this up. Their rent would be $2,000, but if they wanted to have a parking place, it would be $2,500. I mean, I, I know that...
Well, it wouldn't work, not like that.
I haven't rented in so long, I don't know what rents are.
Now, let's say if your rent's $2,000, then you might have a charge of $50 or $100 a month for a parking space.
A parking space, okay.
Right. That's unbundled.
Oh, that's unbundled, so you'd know it in advance.
Like, it's just the same thing as if you want to have a pet and you get charged for pet, that's an unbundled charge.
Right, okay. That's, that's fine, and, and you, you tell them in, in advance.
Right.
But you are planning on, on charging for residential parking.
Correct.
All right. I'm particularly interested in making sure that some of the language in here that's vague on the streetscape and on the Chesapeake Bay, I mean, Chesapeake Bay, the W O D Trail, sorry, I'm in another meeting.
That's another commitment we're making, yeah.
And I'd also like to know if the, the landscaping that you're showing around the market square, which is supposedly a community benefit, wouldn't this market square and any streets that are above it be over parking or over the city, the theaters? Because this is something that we've run into before. If you have things that are underneath it, you can't put in trees or bushes, things like that?
Well, that's not, not, not correct, and we've been going through an extensive, extensive plan on how to do trees and landscaping over the garage, because you're correct, there is a garage down below, there's a theater just to the west.
Okay.
And there are, there are many strategies for that. You can, you can create...
Okay, well, we don't, we don't have to get into it, but...
You just, you just have to create enough room for the roots and...
I just want to make sure that that's, that that is a given, because I don't want to have to deal with that site plan, that we're not going to have any trees on this project.
No, we're going to have trees on the project.
Okay. But aside from that, I think the, the, we just need final plans, absolutely final, so that we can vote. And one of the things I'm concerned about, and Mr. Snyder, this, or Gary, this goes to you, I understand that the boards and commissions aren't, are not expected to get their reports into October, until October the 30th. They have until then, and we're voting on the 2nd of November.
That's right.
I, I, are we going to see those beforehand? I mean, if they still have concerns, I think we should know about them. And I hate to see you working over the weekend to get those plans to us on that Monday, the 2nd.
And then, could I follow up with?
Yes.
Unbundled parking, I'd like staff to give us some figures of what effect that might be to, on the street parking, which would take, be a difficulty for the residents on Grove and on Park Avenue. My thought of unbundled was a little different. I just thought it was unencumbered, so people could park where, but, so, I think that's an important thing that we need to have. And, yeah, I think there's still so much information coming in, I don't know how we're going to vote on the 2nd, I really don't. Is the boards and commissions are still working on it?
Well, let's ask that question now. So, we have AAB's report, we have some other things. Are you cautiously optimistic that after your technical meeting with the developer on Thursday, we'll have a reasonably good report in time, or do we need, what, what should we do?
Well, in terms of the plans, there's no time to...
Oh, you should use a microphone before that nice woman comes and yells at you.
So, we would have the same plans and they could address any of the pending issues. I mean, the thing you...
So, and then, the, I mean, the final, I mean, the recommendation on the 2nd could be, you know, there's these issues, A, B, C, that are still, you know, as part of our recommendation to the council and guidance is, you know, these three issues are still pending, and they need to work on that, because that's the whole purpose of all the board and commission comments, to get public comment, including the planning commissions, to then pull all that together, sort of like we've done in the past where we group it by topic, and then present it to you and the council in mid-November, where you get the whole package and all the comments, and then from there, we make recommendations to the council to provide final guidance to the developer, who then would go make any final revisions, and there would be time to look at those, and then, and prior to the 2nd reading. So, I think the process, while tight, provides the opportunity that you're looking for, but I think if they can narrow down the list or eliminate it altogether, that would be optimal, but there, you know, your recommendation can address those, any pending issues that aren't addressed to your satisfaction on November 2nd, and then that would be collated in with all the other board and commission comments for mid-November, and you would be there with the council and weigh in on them, say, this was our recommendation, this is why, these were our issues, we'd like to see the guidance coming out of the council work session tonight to reflect those. So, I think there's a...
Well, so, I think if we have, I'm only speaking for myself, I think if we're just talking about an A and a B and maybe a C, that's workable, but currently, I think it's a little, we've got a little more than that going on here. Does that seem fair?
Yeah.
All right. So, November 2nd, I had two quick questions. Do we have a shadow study on this project?
We do.
Yeah, it was in the architectural elevation package?
It's in the back of that.
The last pages.
All right, I didn't see it. Okay. When will we, okay, so, to be clear, though, this is the final project, and it's just a question of going through the staff report. Is that where we are on this?
That's correct.
This is it, it's not changing. We're going to knock out the staff report, but there are no...
We are, we are addressing the issues in the staff report that you're looking at, and many of them have been addressed, but this is the project plan. And I'd like to make one comment, if I may, about the theater, since there was so much discussion about that, and it's a complicated concept. I think it's important for you to know that the theater is, the theater's paying for itself with the help of the admissions tax, okay? So, the theater is paying for its parking, and it's paying for the construction of the building and the interior that we have to do for the tenant. So, when you say, if we remove the theater, what effect does that have on the rest of the massing of the project? Well, it has very little effect on the rest of the massing of the project, because the theater is, at least with rent and the admissions tax, able to pay for the, the underground parking cost and the construction of that theater. What benefit we get out of that, once we reach that break-even level, if you will, is the draw that the theater brings to a project like this. And the contact, or the, or the, the, the type of project this project becomes is an entertain, not only a food project, but an entertainment and food project. And those are very important aspects of retail in this project. So, that's why we are very high on having the theater in the project. As we've worked with the theaters and been able to get their rents at least to a minimum level and make this work, the draw aspects of it and the classification of the project, because you have a theater anchor, is very valuable to the project. And it's not driving extra cost itself for passing on the residential side.
Well, it's not covering its own cost. Through, through a subsidy, it, it's able to break even.
Through a tax on its own ticket sales, it's breaking even, correct?
Well, but, but, but that is a tax we are then precluded from collecting in some other part of the city. So, essentially, we are subsidizing, it's, it's, maybe it's okay, maybe we can make a conscious decision to, to subsidize a private developer, which I, I know that some people feel that that's kind of anathema, but it's, it's okay, that's what we are doing. It's, it's okay. It's, you know, it feels a little unusual to have a subsidy on private development, but it, but it's okay. I mean, that's fine, that's, we just acknowledge what it is. So, it's all right.
Yeah, and, and again, any theater that's built is going to have to have a project, and it's going to have to have enough land to create a project that will make the theater want to come to that project, and the developer's going to have to spend a lot of money to build a theater, whether it's above ground or below ground. Low ground is more expensive, but it is a costly proposition.
Sure, understood, but it, but it is a subsidy. That was the only thing we were clear on. But, but we'll pick that up on, on November 2nd. So, those people in, in the audience, I know we have business owners and, and landowners and, and residents, and I want to thank you for coming to this work session. You're welcome to stay for other exciting work sessions, but I know this was the main event, so to speak. The schedule at this moment is that we have a public hearing on November 2nd, and we will vote.
We not?
I think it will, it will do it democratically. So, thank you very much for, everyone for coming. I hope we hear your comments. I hope we hear your suggestions and continued feedback. It's all been very helpful and informative.
Mr. Chairman, the app that is going to email this to us, we will just, we will get back to you in the presentation. back to you in the presentation.
Do they want to wait until after Thursday?
Yeah, we'll get...
You'll have further changes, I believe, after your meeting with city staff on Thursday?
And we'll have finishing up with some commitments also.
Okay. So let's wait until Thursday.
Okay. Thank you.
I think we've seen a lot of rough drafts of this project, so this would be good to get sort of near the end on this. Okay, so, item B, West Broad Street Small Area Plan.
Oh, boy. Oh, boy. Okay, where are we? Where are... Yes, you do, yeah. After all the pretty, it's after all the pretty pictures.
Cast a huge shadow.
We'll have to work our ways, we have to work our ways without voting on the subject.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, Mr. Stoddard, can you do this in six minutes?
Six minutes is a little tight, I will go as quickly as I can, though.
Eleven?
Yeah, let's try for fifteen. How about fifteen? Let's see.
Okay, I mean this in a nice way, and I would have said it to them if they were here. Don't read your PowerPoint to us. We're smart people, we can read it, we already have the package, we've already read it.
Understood.
And I think I remember telling Paul that a long time ago. Right, Paul?
You know, I was in a meeting, and one guy was reading the PowerPoint, he's like, got about halfway through it, he goes, "Do I look like an idiot?"
So what I'd like to do with tonight's presentation is hit some of the highlights. There are copies of the updated chapters in the package, they were distributed to the planning commission last week, and so I want to use this presentation just to hit on some of the highlights. This is actually a repeat from the last time, but it's more to make sure that we're sort of understanding the context of the planning effort, that the small area plans exist to provide a vision for each POA, that each POA serves a different role, a different function within the city, and the small area plans are the place to define how that works. The local context in this area, this is the center of the city, being adjacent to or next to or nearby over half the city's population, stretching all the way from Little Falls Street on the east side to the WNOD Trail on the west side. This is also a place where there's been a lot of focus for redevelopment activity and private investment in the area over the last 15, 20 years. And it's also an area that sits in a larger regional context. There is a lot of development, either ongoing or planned, in regional activity centers around the city, and so there are going to be pressures on the city from those outside forces. There is some movement on this in terms of the official process. Tonight, the work session with the planning commission, hoping to bring this back to the planning commission for their action on the small area plan November 2nd in two weeks, at which point it would go up to the council for their work session, and hopefully a council action on November 23rd. Highlights. Vision statement is the same, the idea of creating a vibrant economic place that is pedestrian-friendly, bicycle-friendly, and that is consistent with the existing conditions in the corridor. Goals. Looking for places that create these nodes, these activity areas, while also blending to surrounding land uses, making sure that any sort of disparate impact on surrounding residential, because there is a lot of it, is minimized. Within the concept chapter, key concepts that permeate throughout the rest of the plan, the idea of respectful building design, understanding that there are some smaller buildings, there are historic buildings, there are nicely designed buildings, there are residential buildings in and around this area, so making sure that the building design with redevelopment and infill pays homage to that. Using innovative development, looking for new styles of development, things like TDM plans to reduce demands on roads, like integrated stormwater management. Creating connections, making sure that there are pedestrian connections, but also economic connections, that this is an area that could be a neighborhood-serving sort of place. But today, there's a real lack of any sort of neighborhood services in the area. So people who live right next to these commercial areas are forced to travel to other places to get their services. Developing identified nodes, that's really strengthening a development pattern that's already going on with specific retail and office areas. And then, following up on the momentum that adopting the plan creates, to take some short-term actions that eventually lead to long-term changes. That can be piloting projects that might later get funded through the CIP process, but making sure something gets on the ground now so that people can see it and experience it and get excited about funding it and seeing it deliver over time. Within the concept map, this was in the package, a number of sites are in purple, and they're identified as the sites for redevelopment, and then there's a block-by-block view of what that might look like. This is the 300 block with the Broaddale Shopping Center, the ongoing construction of the Harris Teeter, looking at that front face of the block that's on Broad Street as a place for an area of activated and focused retail development within the planning opportunity area. Moving along on the 400 block, looking for opportunities to infill on the corner of Virginia, looking for opportunities to expand the existing hotel, the Inns of Virginia, which currently faces sideways, but a redevelopment of that could actually bring it out to the street and make it engage with the street. Within the 500 and 800 blocks, looking at opportunities for some amount of increased office uses along Broad Street in the vicinity of the hotel, the Flower Building, an existing office building on the corner of Lee and Broad. And then, Park Avenue, this is described more in the text, of keeping that as sort of a lower-scale place that transitions to the residential neighborhood, and making sure that the uses there have a sort of a low intensity. So it's not intended to be a place where it's people coming and going at all hours of the day, it's intended to be a more quiet space. Moving on to the St. James area, understanding that St. James is going to be there for a long time, they're a community anchor, there are benefits, a sort of quality of life in the city, and so making sure that sort of development is consistent with that. So keeping lower-scale buildings in and around the St. James property, and trying to use streetscape that mimics what's on the other side of the street. So if St. James has a nice entrance, then the redevelopment should have a nice entrance to mirror that and highlight it. And then moving down, looking at some of the larger sites that might allow for redevelopment of larger parcels, or maybe an infill sort of strategy, for example, at the corner of Broad and Southwest. If the Taco Bell stays in place, well, maybe the rest of the shopping center around it could redevelop, or maybe the Taco Bell goes first, but the idea is to sort of work within the footprints that are available. Chapter four, land use. This is the existing land use map, showing, for the most part, mixed use where recent development, redevelopment has occurred, and then a mixture of retail and office uses otherwise. One of the things about the land use map, and the chapter text tries to speak to this, is that the land use map, in some ways, doesn't show you the whole picture, that, yes, there's a little bit of mixed use in terms of footprint, but that's actually most of the development. Those office uses and retail uses that are there today are often only one story, and they take up only a very small portion of their lot. And so, the map, when you look at it in this coloring, makes it look like there's actually a lot of retail and business activity, but in fact, there's actually very little. The adopted future land use map, which is a part of the city's comprehensive plan, its official planning document, shows a desire for mixed use, which typically means redevelopment, paired with office uses or business uses, and then transition along the southern border. Park Avenue provides the transition on the north, the backsides of the buildings are going to have to provide those transitions on the south. The plan calls for not a direct change to the adopted future land use map, but instead, a strategy of understanding that development proposals may come in, and they may not agree with what's in the existing adopted, within the adopted future land use map, but they may be consistent with the goals of this plan and other city policies. And so, there would be a justification then for updating the future land use map, provided goals and policy objectives were being met. And so the idea then is to allow for a more flexible use of uses, and identifying where there's a desire for these retail nodes and the office nodes, the retail's on the ends of the corridor, and the office nodes at the intersection with Oak. In terms of fiscal impact, the city has a fiscal impact model, and this was run on to look at the implications of developing the identified properties in that concept map, and growing them in size, if they're on Park Avenue, either up to three stories or four stories, and if they're on Broad Street, either up to five stories or seven stories. And then a typical mix of residential and commercial properties. What's been seen recently is 70/30, which is that middle column, and then left and right are the sort of sensitivity numbers, if there's either more or less residential. And so it shows a pretty wide range in the upper right-hand corner, a low-end estimate of $5.9 million in terms of net fiscal impact, and a high end of 14.2 in the lower-left corner. And so this is intended to provide a sort of estimate of what might occur as redevelopment occurs along the corridor. And just to put this in context, the city's typical budget for the year is about $80 million. And so, these numbers are a substantial change in terms of net benefit. Looking at zoning, and this is something that comes up quite a few times, what's the difference between zoning and land use? Land use is really where you're talking about the future and you're planning for what might be possible. Zoning is a restriction on what you can do today. That zoning is a legal restriction on what people can or cannot do with their properties. The existing zoning map today allows calls for mostly B1 zoning across the corridor, with a little bit of B3. And B1 and B3, just for reference, are typical business uses, and they allow for heights up to...
55 feet.
55 feet by right.
Plus 30 feet.
30 feet with a special exception. And the idea here, again, similar to that proposed future land use map that was shown, this is a proposed zoning map, that these are changes that could be allowed with a redevelopment proposal, if that proposal was consistent with the goals of the plan. And it shows, it doesn't show up unfortunately well on the screen here, but the idea is to look at those boundary areas along the north and the south, and allow them to either change, to become either B1 or T2 or T1. And the idea is not to change them proactively, because you don't want to allow a by-right development that you didn't expect. The idea is to change it with the development proposal, and to allow that flexibility for any of those zones, so that the proposal can meet the goals of the plan. Again, zoning is a tool, it's not a planning device, and so you want to use the appropriate tool for the objective you're trying to achieve. Mobility and accessibility. There are a number of strategies laid out for the various modes. For pedestrian, a lot of it is about access and safety. So making sure that there are more crossings than there are today, making sure the crossings are easier to find by restriping things, and also changing the street geometry, making sure that intersections are smaller so vehicles are moving slower. Bicycle, the city just adopted, recently adopted a bicycle master plan, so implementing both the routes that are in that plan, as well as the bike share expansion plans that are called for and installing bike racks. Transit, again, the city has an adopted plan that calls for upping service frequency to 15 minutes throughout the day, consolidating bus stops and providing shelters along the corridor. That can be done either by the public side or the private side along with redevelopment. And then transit, on the rail side, the closest metro station, metro rail station to the area is the West Broad Street, I'm sorry, the West Falls Church Station. Grove Avenue is the most direct link to that station, and so the plan calls for focusing and making Grove Avenue a place that is focused on pedestrian and bicycle access and safety. That may mean installing traffic calming, it may mean trying to limit it, the number of automobiles that can go on that street, but the idea is focusing on Grove Avenue as a way for bike and pedestrian connection to be made between the area and West Falls Church. Strategies for the automobile, some of these things are actually minimizing the impacts of automobile travel on the area. As I mentioned, the city exists in a larger region, and so, working with regional partners to route regional traffic around the city, where it might be able to make a smoother ride, and also looking at truck restrictions, that today trucks are restricted on 50, but not on 7, so working with VDOT to get that reversed. And then other things that go along within the area, so inter parcel connectivity, shared parking, looking at ways to increase access for a variety of modes. As I mentioned, shared parking, looking at ways to improve access. So metered parking is all about providing access. So you want to make sure that if the businesses need access, time the meters such that that works, or price the meters effectively such that that works. And then, looking at residential parking restrictions, and this is more for areas around the planning opportunity area, so places like Grove Avenue, places like West Street, that may see an impact from redevelopment activity, use residential parking restrictions to prevent parking from the commercial areas overflowing into the residential. Character and design, this is all about that, making those transitions between the redevelopment activity and the existing residential development, as well as some of the smaller-scale buildings in the area. And so urban design, as this plan breaks it down, is into building design, streetscape, and open spaces. Building design talks about sort of the shape of the building, making sure that setbacks are used, and there's a picture on the right showing a pedestrian walking on the street still has a clear view of the sky, that, yes, the building in this case is five stories tall, but from the pedestrian's perspective, it's actually only two. Using horizontal design, that the Pearson Square Building actually does a nice job of this, that they break up the facade of the building every few hundred feet, and so as you're walking along, you get the feel that it is not one large building, it's actually many smaller buildings. And then masonry and decorative feature, those sort of touch, those nice touches and the investments in the building facade that seem to stand up over time, and make people feel like this is a special place, which it is. Streetscape, so, looking at the streetscape over time, taking advantage of what's already adopted as city policies, the West Broad Street streetscape plan, but then also recent policies that have also been adopted, the bus shelter plan, the bike plan, and looking at sort of changing access needs. And so, making all of that work together, taking advantage of the 20-foot setback on Broad Street, and how does that space get divvied up? Narrowing down and standardizing the travel lanes to 11 feet, which is still wide enough to allow buses and trucks. And then understanding that the sidewalk is actually going to serve a variety of spaces, it could be dining space, it could be an amenity area where the street trees and the street lamps are placed, or it could be the pedestrian accessway. Park Avenue, understanding that this is going to be a place where sort of some potential redevelopment and residential character is going to have to meld, so using street trees and taking advantage of all the space that's available on Park Avenue, where there may not be enough space on the sidewalk to get street trees, they can be installed in the street with bulbouts and planters. And bike parking as well can be positioned on the street instead of on the sidewalk to leave open that space. And then side streets, things like Little Falls and Oak and Lee, using these side streets as the access spaces for these large buildings to try and minimize curb cuts on Park and Broad, but understanding that these side streets are still going to need to meet streetscape standards, providing lighting, providing street trees. Parks in open space, just the inherent drawings of the POAs focused on the commercial areas make it difficult to include large-scale parks in the POAs, so really the focus on connecting to the existing large-format parks, whether that's Cherry Hill, Howery Herman, the West End Park, using gateways and signage to help people find those parks and enjoy them. And then, what is a more sort of appropriate use for adding green space into the area is pocket parks and plazas. And so the plan identifies a couple places where that could happen, and stresses the need to fold plaza design into, especially the larger format redevelopments. Implementation, as I mentioned, taking short-term actions, basic things like getting out and cleaning up the streetscape and repairing loose bricks, repairing the plantings, that West Broad Street streetscape plan calls for an extensive set of plantings in those tree beds, that hasn't been maintained at that standard, so going out and getting that done, repainting the crosswalks, which are disappearing in a number of places, and also wayfinding signs and bike parking. These are basic access needs for people who want to arrive by bike, they need a place to store their car, I'm sorry, their bike. For people who want to move around by foot, they need to know where they're going and how long it's going to take them. Wayfinding signs can be an inexpensive way to do that. And then long-term investments, these are the things that the short-term actions make the case for. Allowing continued private investment to come in, a lot of times, the plan talks about being walk-friendly. A big part of walk-friendly is having things to do. It's not enough just to have a nice sidewalk, you've got to have a reason to go on that sidewalk. And so bringing in private investment, we talked about this on the walking tour, places like the Mad Fox, these places that people like and they want to go to and become partners with the community. Pedestrian accessibility, in addition to repainting the crossings, putting in high-visibility crossings and increasing the number of crossings, installing nice gateway signs on the park... crossings and increasing the number of crossings, installing nice gateway signs on the parks, and then working over time to underground utilities both along West Broad Street and Park Avenue. That's a big deterrent right now to pedestrian access is that in some cases the sidewalk is only a foot or two wide. So getting those utility poles out of the way is important. So again, just going back to the intro, why have a small-area plan, providing a vision, understanding the function and role of each area, and then also the vision of creating this sort of economic, economically viable area, diverse offerings, neighborhood-serving retail. And that is the end of the show.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, I would like to compliment Garrison Kitt and also Paul Stoddard for continuing their good work on this. I would like to mention, if you go back to your first slide...
Absolutely.
...showing the location, we have aspirations for Broad Street to be a great street. It's part of our mobility for all modes. And I'd like you just to take a look at the location of this and the extent of Broad Street that this area includes, including the population north and south of it. It is most of Broad Street in the commercial part, west of Washington, and it has this large amount of population north and south of it. And so the notion of connecting Falls Church, the downtown, the west end, the north and the south, it really is very strategic. And yet, as you go look at it, our investment there has been quite poor. We, you know, we, it needs a lot of work. It needs undergrounding, it needs new sidewalks. It will not be a great street without a combination of extensive public and private investment. Some years ago, the city invested $16 million through a combination of bond issues, CIP, et cetera, to do a lot of the work that's been done on Broad Street. And that, I would say, most people feel has been an outstanding investment. It's the part of Broad Street that makes it feel like a main street, makes it feel like Falls Church. And so the importance of this plan to kind of outline the future, but also in your role looking forward at future CIPs, bond issues, et cetera, this is an area of critical importance for investment. And so I would just ask you to just take a look at how much of Broad Street this is, how important the idea of a great street, and how important this is strategically in terms of realizing that vision, and how much of the city is really north and south of this. And that really is part of the concept of connecting Falls Church, downtown with the west end, north and south, places to go on the street itself. And particularly, I'm sure those of you who've been, who've walked it and are very familiar with it, know what I'm talking about. But I think it's an area worthy of continued investment, the private investment will follow public investment. So I think that combination is crucial if we're going to have it truly become a great main street for the city of Falls Church.
Ms. Rogers, you have been our unofficial, although we could make you our official...
Sorry, Paul.
Reappointed.
Liaison to this exciting project, so why don't you...
Okay.
...take it away.
First, I want to also compliment Mr. Stoddard and Garrison Kitt on this very well-done staff report. Easy to understand and was really helpful. I do have a couple of questions. One, where are chapters one, two, and eight?
Ah, I'm sorry. Chapters one and two haven't had any changes since the last time they were presented to the planning commission. Chapter eight is still in the works, that's the Utilities and Environment chapter, and we're still hoping to get a few things folded in there in terms of tree canopy goals, as well as specific to the undergrounding, identifying specifically which poles have to come down as groups. A lot of times, we go out for a grant application, and we say, ah, we're going to underground this street, and then we get, we start sort of scoping it out and realize we actually have to take the undergrounding around the corner. So understanding that with this planning effort would be really helpful.
So that's something that will be folded into this plan...
Yes.
...after it's finished and we've reviewed it and it's gone to City Council, it will then fold into this, or...
I expect the, that chapter to be updated in time for the November 2nd Planning Commission action.
Oh, my goodness, okay. All right.
And Ms. Rogers, just in terms of chapter two, which I think is concept, I mean, I would like to add...
Chapter three is concept.
Chapter three is concept. I would like to add some additional beefing up of the importance of Broad Street and in terms of the city.
Okay.
There are some very good things in there, but I think particularly the great street idea and the extent of Broad Street that this area encompasses, it's, we need to say as much about that as we can.
Okay. Under creating connections, we talk about Broad Street should focus on neighborhood-serving, retail, and services to support the surrounding development nodes and the just adjacent residential neighborhood. Is that assuming that other shopping would be in the downtown area or in other areas? If we're just going to be, are we, we're not saying that we couldn't have that other kind of shopping, but that it would have to be neighborhood-serving, retail, and services to support the surrounding neighborhood?
It's not restricted to it. I think with a lot of the POAs that have been done recently, the Washington Street corridor was completed, and that the schools' area planning is ongoing now, and I think a lot of that planning has had a regional focus of how do we draw people into the city so that they can spend their money here, and that can benefit the city's tax rolls. But I think the idea for this, this area is that it really is more internal to the city. That doesn't preclude regional uses, but as the planning goes on, there should be an attention given to how is this going to directly benefit the adjacent residents? Can they, can people walk to the dry cleaner now instead of having drive to one end or the other?
Okay, well, I agree with that. I think every neighborhood needs its neighborhood services, but it kind of goes against the vision of Mason Row. And then we go to vibrant neighborhoods and public spaces, and it says, "Small-area plans speak to increasing the amount of open space and the vibrancy of public areas." Where, and I didn't find that mentioned in the, in the, all the other chapters. So I was wondering if you could just indicate where we could find, where I could find that so I could read that, because I think it's really important to emphasize public spaces and open spaces.
The map in the urban design chapter talks about parks and open space, and so here, right, a lot of the map here is focusing on sort of connections to surrounding areas, but there are also, this came out of the Parks for People Plan, really highlighting Broad Street and Park Avenue as public open spaces, that a lot of cities are starting to take those areas back, that they don't just have to be for moving automobiles around, that those are places where you can create places for people to gather, you can create parks, you can create areas for people to play, you can increase tree canopy, so you can give a very park-like feel. And those are very long stretches of the area. The other way to increase open space is with sort of pocket parks and plazas.
Yeah, and I thought this was very good, but I didn't see anything in the text to emphasize that, and I think that's important.
That can be worked in.
Next is in the concept plan, when we talk about the St. James area...
Mm-hmm.
And I noticed that that kind of fades out, it's not in the picture on this. We've kind of let St. James out in the ethernet somewhere. We're not, we, they're not enfolded into this plan. And yet, when we get to North Spring Street, we say it should be converted to two-way traffic. I think there's a little bit of pushback on that, and I don't say, think that we can make this kind of a policy statement here until it's decided, where it says it should be converted. I mean, you might say could be, it could be considered, or just drop that whole sentence. I mean, I, the mid-block crossing is fine, but until that's resolved as a policy issue, I don't think we should mention that.
I agree with you.
The other thing is, to go back to the official design, where the Stratford Motor Hotel, we decided we didn't want an eight-story building there, or we didn't want to emphasize an eight-story building there, and now it just says four or more stories. I'd like to see it say up to four stories, that the rest, like the rest of that entire shopping center says.
I would just say, did we actually come to that conclusion? I think we had a difference of opinion. Maybe I was the only one, but instead of just going that...
Well, I'd be happy to vote on that.
Yeah, me too. Because I noticed there's actually two five-story office buildings in the official design zone area, so limiting this one to four stories, which is even farther away.
The zone allows more than 40 feet.
It doesn't, it doesn't limit it to four, so instead of saying eight and more, now it says four or more.
I know, that's fine, but I think she said up to four.
Yeah, but it's the height, because so there is actually zoning on this.
Yes.
There is like a law...
Sure.
...that specifically says the building height, and it could be five stories, I guess, although the ceiling...
There's already two buildings of five stories in the official design zone, so clearly it's possible.
I think one of the thoughts is this frontage...
But they're probably only 55 feet.
That's fine, and I'm not, I'm not asking us to change the zoning. This goes back to the other point of if this is the part of the plan where we're trying to, you know, or we're, this isn't the zoning, this isn't a zoning map, right? I mean, the zoning is zoning, I'm not saying we should change the zoning. Right, so my question is, do we proactively tell developers that we won't allow anything greater than four stories there?
But, but that's the whole thing, is we're not telling them that they can't do what we're saying, we would like to see it.
Okay, would we? I don't, I'm not limited to that.
I, yeah, I, I think...
I mean, the zoning limits it now.
I think the majority of us, when we had this discussion, felt that saying eight or more just was way out of whack...
Way too much.
...with the project, so I think taking it out of four or more allows it to be eight.
I'm okay with four or more. Ruth is asking you to say up to four.
I'm asking to say...
That's what I'm not okay with.
I'd like it to say 55 feet.
Yeah, I'd like to say, please follow our zoning here.
You can't go above 55 feet. If you want to put only Lilliputians in the building and have them be...
Mr. Chairman, one of the thoughts on this block is, since it is commercial usage along the Broad Street areas, that the OD really works better up against the park and the City Hall, and possibly B1, which is more consistent with the frontage along here, that has a maximum of 55 feet unless more is granted. But that, I think, is one of the thoughts, wasn't it, Paul, that B1 might be an appropriate zone for the frontage on this block?
Yeah.
It's shown as red business on the, on the land use plan.
Okay, so there were two issues that we, that we came up with. One is, we did not feel this document was the appropriate place to change the applicable zoning, right? So if you're changing the zoning, let's have a motion to change the zoning, and let's change the zoning.
Small-area plans often say what zoning changes could be considered.
Well, but...
They don't change them in themselves.
But we reject it, well, I think that was the substance of the disagreement. So I appreciate what you're saying, we don't, I don't think that there is a consensus that we agree with you.
That's for sure.
I'm just saying, the land use plan...
Yeah, but we don't agree with it.
...is showing it as commercial along that frontage and the usage.
I think their majority likes the existing land use plan.
Which shows it as business.
Well, if it shows it as business, it doesn't show it as mixed use.
We're, we're...
Understood. My point, though, is that in terms of the special design aspects, you, you see that on the Park Avenue side, and that's, I think, the buildings that have been built there have been sensitive to that. What we have on the backside, on the Broad Street side now is a one-story strip center and an old hotel. It needs better design, doesn't really meet the OD design.
We agree with that. Okay, so if I could, the, this is sort of the, what's looked at as sort of possible zoning map amendments, and it's showing that front half of that 300 block, which is in the lower-right corner, looking at, again, zoning is a tool, the OD district is there to make sure that buildings are designed in a cohesive fashion, they're supposed to work well with the library, with City Hall, with Cherry Hill Park. One of the tough things about that block today is that over 50% of it is surface parking. And so I don't think that that's the image, at least what I've heard is that that's not the image the city wants to portray, that it's a surface parking lot, and so I think...
Yeah, but, okay, so you're doing it, you're killing me here. So you're taking us down a road that I think we've been down, and I think we disagree with you, okay? So I'm happy to go down this road, and it seems like we're going down the road at 9:26. So you've gone over your time. Here's the thing, across the street...
Your six minutes.
...from Broaddale Village are two-story townhouses.
Yep.
So the intention of the OD zone, and we have discussed this in public sessions many times, the purpose of this is partly to keep scales relatively consistent. And if you remember, we had a sort of a substantive discussion with the height amassing of the Harris Teeter project on the front of Broad Street, and it was believed that that surface parking, which you are so critical of and seem to hate so much, had a certain value relative to the scale of the stuff across the street. Now, it's conceivable, in my lifetime, someone will come and individually assemble each one of those two-story townhouses, but until that happens, the intent was not to create condo canyons up and down Broad Street. So you can lead us down the road of continually building these denser buildings, but I don't think, at this moment, there is a general consensus from the planning commission to do that. You can say whatever you want to about zoning being a tool or use another platitude, but I think we've talked about this and not agreed with you.
I don't think the intention of this map is to say that this should become a condo canyon, that the statement on the map in the text is only support the rezoning if the goals of the plan are met. The whole point is to...
You've changed the OD, though, haven't you?
Right, but that's, a lot of times, a rezoning is how you get all of your developer contributions. So allow an avenue for a rezoning so that you can get the contributions you're looking for.
No, I think that block is going to stay retail. Broaddale Shopping Center has many good leases, going to be there that way for a long time. I think it's a, we've talked about in the planning for that area, the value of the retail on either side of the new grocery store as being a valuable thing. This is not suggesting mixed use, it's really just recognizing that you have a commercial edge here with retail uses that I think are going to be there in their present form for a long time, possibly with the exception of what happens to the hotel. I don't expect the Broaddale Center to change, other than be improved through lease improvements over time. It's a stable, valuable, very active...
Right.
...shopping center. I doubt it's going to change...
Fine.
...for a long, long time.
I'm really talking about the hotel and whether it would be, you know, are we saying that it could be 70 feet? No, I don't think we're saying...
And I don't think we're saying that either, I'm just...
All right, fine.
I just wanted to differentiate between the back Park Avenue, the way it's designed, is different from our Broad Street.
Honestly, my, my main question is that this thing is called concept, right? And there's all kinds of stuff throughout here, you know, mixed use up to four stories, expanded hotel, four or more stories, I mean, all kinds of things in here that would require a special exception for them to be done. And so my, and I'm fine if we want, I would like to have a vote on it, but if we would like to say, as the planning commission, that in this concept plan, which has nothing to do with the zoning, this spot, we want to either limit to four stories, over here we have it in two places, up to four stories, or if in this spot, across from the Harris Teeter, not up against residential townhouses, we would be okay with a special exception that met all the criteria came in. That's all I'm saying, I'm not trying to change the zoning, I'm not trying to do anything, I'm just saying this whole section seems to be concept plan, seems to be ideas we're throwing out there, not reinforcing the zoning, there's, all of this is against the zoning. The zoning doesn't allow mixed use up here, it's all special exception, so...
But then you go back to the slideshow where Paul says, or Jim, I've forgotten who said it. This is something that makes, makes the city give direction and vision to developers.
Absolutely.
Okay, so...
So I guess my point is, I'm not trying to change the zoning, I'm saying if we want to talk and just vote, or you guys want to just tell me I'm the only ones who don't even have to vote?
Well, what are we voting on?
I don't think we're voting.
I don't know what you vote on, but like, so this square, this, this stuff here says where the Starbucks and stuff is now, mixed use. That would require a special, special exception to build anything mixed use there, right? But you guys are okay with that?
Yes, yes.
Even mixed use up to four stories would require a special exception. So I just want to clarify, you guys want to tell a developer, don't even propose anything above four stories, because we're going to shoot it down out of the gates for that spot.
Well, you said that.
That's, I just want to confirm, that's what we want to say, because that's what we'd be saying, I think, if we say up to four stories in that location.
But that's what the zoning says.
The zoning wouldn't let you build mixed use there without a special exception.
Yeah, but... So if we're just going to say zoning, can we throw this whole section out and ask them to refer to the zoning?
Well, and if you recall, we had a substantive discussion about how it would be better to be somewhat more, less specific in some of these concept plans, because now all of a sudden, we are getting pretty damn specific, aren't we?
Yeah, no, I mean, up to or over four, that's not that specific. Well, case in point, if the current Mason Row location, we had passed this a year ago, and we had said up to four stories, like in the concept thing, then I think on day one, when they came with a five-story building, we could have just said sayonara, and we would have saved ourselves a lot of time. So I'm attempting to do that now. If you guys want to limit that to four stories, let's go ahead and do it, and we'll enjoy the Stratford for next year.
Could I join in here for a minute? However, we've had the difficulty with, we've got the zoning, we got the official design zoning, and we had this company that came in, wanted to do an 11-story building. How in the world did they even get an opportunity to present that?
Because it's a free country.
That part, I don't know.
I'd say filed their application, that's it.
Well, they did, they actually didn't even file an application, but they didn't officially file anything.
But it was, that's ridic, I mean, what a waste of everybody's time, and plus the fact, now... And plus the fact, now everybody's saying, oh my God, they're going to put eleven stories in there.
Rob said it looked good.
It was a beautiful building.
Well, maybe we can get them to do it somewhere else.
Yeah, it was a beautiful building.
It was a beautiful building.
But that's my point, Lyndy, is that, is that right now we don't have the plan, but if you had a plan, in that meeting, someone could say, well, you know, we, we had this debate, Andy was the only one that wanted more than four stories, so you're really not going to get anywhere, you know, we'll, we'll sit here and hear your eleven-story building idea, but if that were a four-story building, maybe you should come back again. I'm sure that's what, I mean, I guess that's what I told him anyway, because eleven stories is pretty tall. But that's my point, is that if we want those people to never get beyond that meeting for anything over four stories, then absolutely change this to up to four stories.
There are plenty of other places they can go in the city, they could go and go for-
I know, but Ruth, what I don't like is, I don't like-
All right, Andy, you don't like it.
The Stratford Motor Lodge, it's a dump, and the only way to get that gone is to let somebody come in here and do something.
Yeah, but I, I think we're all pretty, I, I don't know, maybe you're okay with eleven stories, but I think we all felt like this area wasn't-
You're putting words on my mouth, I said I would like it to say four or more stories.
Well, okay, I would like to say up to four stories.
That's fine, let's vote, that's what we should vote on, Rob.
Well, we're, we're not voting on it tonight.
Okay, but I don't want to, I, then I respectfully request that we do not change this to-
Try to save us from ourselves for the Wednesday, or the November second meeting.
Or I'll just vote down the whole thing, I guess, if that's my only choice.
That's a good idea.
And I've got another question for Paul. On the zoning map, you've got the lighter shade of yucky green behind the OD design on the corner. Does that mean that the carry-through is on Little Falls Street for official design?
I'm sorry, I-
I think that just means it's outside of the zone, so it's faded.
It's outside, the, the official design includes the area of the City Hall and Cherry Hill Park.
Okay, okay, gotcha.
It simply faded away because it's outside of the opportunity area.
It just looked rather little there, and I guess it is a little.
But across Park Street is part of official design also.
Sorry.
Okay, so unless anyone's got anything earth-shattering, I have one personal favor. We, I would suggest moving for the action items as soon as this is approved. I would suggest somehow including open space and this idea of a plaza or a pocket park, higher up on the list. And here is the personal favor. I would love, in the context of Mr. Nemotny's excellent proposal, I would love some prioritization of where, so don't give us six pocket parks or six plazas, but like, if we had the money to do one in the CIP, where is the best place? So we have literally one bullet in the gun, where are we shooting?
There are two spots identified in the plan. One is where the existing Beto shop is, the other one is a, a, a single-family structure that's owned by St. James Church and is adjacent to the Flower Building.
Okay, fine, excellent. So, well, no, so if we can, if we can have that, it's potentially, we could put that in the CIP, that's something we could get going soon or rather later.
If you had to pick one, one is surrounded by other development, and one is next to a church campus, so.
And of course, the, the other one is in downtown plan, so.
Well, but, we, I think we have, I think we have it in us to do one. So let's figure out where it goes, irrespective of this small area plan.
Sure, sure.
That's a better way of asking.
We're not going to do, here's where I'm going with this. We're not doing six, right? If you give us six, you'll get zero.
That's a better way of asking for it, Rob, thank you.
All right, excellent, thank you.
One, one, just one quick comment.
Yes, ma'am.
If in fact, the Mason Row project is not approved in second reading, will all the references to that project be taken from this? I just want to make sure. I mean, because there are a lot of references.
Currently, the only way it's referenced is that it's grayed out on the plan, and it says that there's a proposed project.
There's, in the text, there's some comments about that there's proposed project up there.
Do you search Mason Row, that it is actually named in there?
Sure, oh, sure, so it talks about it as a proposed project.
But, that's actually a good point. I mean, I think maybe, I don't know if you guys have, keep, I didn't read the history section very carefully, but, but it does make me think, if it doesn't get approved, then do we go back and have this debate over stuff that we haven't, because it isn't, we, it's not, the heights aren't in there, because we kind of grayed that out?
You'd have to plan for it.
Yeah, it seems like we should circle back on that.
Yeah, we could-
But we could do that after.
We could do that as a follow-up to the plan, depending on the outcome of this.
Yeah, I would.
I believe we did remove a lot of references to it.
Yeah, you definitely did, but, but, you know, all down the, the maps, it's on there.
But some, some are still in there.
All right. Comprehensive plan, unless you got anything else?
That's all, thank you.
All right, thanks. Comprehensive plan, housing chapter. And I, thank you so much for waiting. We asked Paul to go faster, and he didn't really, he didn't really help us out there, so.
We're half an hour behind anyway, no matter Paul or-
So, my reputation is kind of on the line here, usually I run a tighter ship.
What else?
Is there anything ahead that's going to require?
We've got the parking thing. I'm not going to open my mouth again, I promise you.
Uh, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Tim Wildman. I'm the housing intern here at Falls Church. I've been here since June first, working a couple days a week. I'm a student as well, and I have a full-time job. So this is my passion, so I would appreciate your time, I do appreciate your time. I, I, this is my first experience with this type of, of presentation, I'm nervous, very nervous.
We'll be very kind, we'll be very kind.
So I apologize if I ramble, if I stutter, if, whatever.
Put on our nice faces.
If, if there's any, anything that you need, give me a poke, it's fine. So, that being said, I will breeze through this, because I know time is an issue. So, the agenda, progress against goals. This is the first update since the, since two thousand and five. I apologize, I didn't introduce my supervisor here, Dana Lewis. If, if there's anything that I don't know the answer to, she definitely does, so. Okay, so, we're, okay, so, progress against goals, and then we can talk about trends and predictions, possibly. And then at the very end, the most important part to me and to this document, I think, is going to be the input of everyone up there. So, very briefly, there were five goals outlined in the two thousand and five plan. Goal number one, I'm not going to read this off, you guys, I'm, I'm sure have read this. I, I will say that in doing this research, I found that the goals were accomplished. They did a tremendous amount, obviously, this is a dynamic time in Falls Church as far as development, which ties in with housing. So utilizing funds, goal two, seek to create new rental apartments, hold that thought, because obviously there's tremendous new rental apartments with more on the way. One important thing from this slide is the mention at the bottom of the affordable dwelling units. That's something that we're currently taking applications for the West Broad complex, which is set to open in January, more on that, at the end. Goal number three, encourage preservation, accomplished, boom, done. Goal four, continue to create supportive and affordable housing. So this is special needs populations. Once again, goal five, fair and equal housing. Would mention, my, my very first day at, at this internship, I was fortunate enough to take part in a mediation between the Broad Falls residents and their property management, which for my first day was like, okay, this is, this is it, this is exactly it. We were able to get a lot accomplished, and hearing from residents at the Housing Commission meeting last month, things are looking up, so, personal experience. Okay, so demographic changes, median age fell, there is an increase in families, more so than in Fairfax and Arlington. The age groups at the bottom and at the top increased, coinciding with families and aging, aging in place. One interesting fact, too, the education rate actually grew. So the postgraduate degrees, forty-six percent of the population, that's, that's exactly twice the United States. So, I mean, it's, it's insane. It, it actually rose so high that the, the percentage of the population with a bachelor's degree fell. So you would think that, how, how does that even, so, anyway. Household income change, that big blue line at the top, households earning two hundred thousand and above. That's right in between Arlington and Fairfax, but if you look at incomes a hundred thousand and below, that fell by a combined eighty-two percent, which is more than Arlington and Fairfax. So, take that as you will. The overall percent increase of families is about twelve percent, so. Average home sales, it's a lot, it's expensive. Interesting fact, at the bottom, first million-dollar property was sold in two thousand and two, and in two thousand and fourteen, one out of every five properties sold was for over a million dollars. Two thousand thirteen, sixteen percent of homes were sold for cash. Once again, that's just, I mean, it's a lot. So that's, that's the, if you're looking at the average resident, that's, that's what, that's what I'm thinking of. Once again, I, I've only been here since June, but that's kind of, you know, kind of, give, been my focus. So, the cost of living, there's, there's kind of a baseline way to measure housing affordability. Households, they, HUD wants them to be paying under thirty percent of their monthly income towards housing costs. Anything above that is burdened. So, two thousand and thirteen census estimate, forty-one percent of renters and twenty percent of homeowners are cost-burdened. The median monthly rent has increased sixty-five percent. So what does that mean as far as actual units? So for an example, if you look at Pearson Square, one bedroom, and this is from the rental survey that was done in April of this past year. One-bedroom rent for nineteen eighty-five a month. So if you extrapolate that, if you, if, if a household didn't want to be burdened but wanted to live there, that household would have to earn seventy-nine thousand four hundred dollars. So if you think about, about that in terms of the area median income, it's about ninety percent for a one-person household. Some research that was done after this packet went to print, if you look, if you think about the rent from the year two thousand, you could rent on, on average, any property in Falls Church earning about eighty percent of the AMI. Today, you can, you can rent probably an efficiency or a one-bedroom for eighty, and at, anything above that, it's just not affordable. So what does that mean for the types of people that could move to Falls Church? Those are just an example. If you had a one-person household, they probably won't be able to afford to live at Pearson Square, and as these new developments are built, it's becoming increasingly clear that the market is raising those rents up, and it's a matter of time before they're just not, it's just not going to be possible. Now, one quick thing that was also added after this went to print was the, the ADU rental program, which we are taking applications for now, for West Broad. The thing that we're finding from some of the applicants is that they just, they, they just don't even earn enough to qualify to be involved in any way in the ADU program. So specifically, we had a married couple, one child, project managers at a legal firm. They didn't earn enough to even qualify for the ADU program. Single-parent registered nurse, has two kids, which would mean that she doesn't earn enough. Single parent, working part-time job and a full-time job, they don't earn enough to even apply for the program. So as, as we're preparing this, this chapter, the thing that stands out to me is what, what, what is the housing department's role in including people from all economic ranges? And that's kind of the question that I posed to group. So, what does it mean for Falls Church to be an inclusive community? What is the connection between economic and business development, as we talk about mixed use and inclusion area housing policy? And then this third point, when we think, think about racial econ, racial, ethnic, and economic diversity, how can we combat what seem to be market forces that, that kind of promote economic homogeneity? So, that's, those are three questions that we, we've been talking about in our, our department as we prepare this document, so.
Well, okay, I actually, I don't know, everybody's getting richer maybe here that lives here, so that's not all bad news. It's kind of the way I saw your chart. Questions, comments, anyone?
Just one comment, you know, my comment is that, just listening to you, is, it's, this is very sobering news. And I have, to be honest with you, I have no answer for that question that you just asked. It's, I think it would take an expert to really come up with something to help us to achieve the goals that I know you're looking at for. We, no, I know we purchased our house maybe sixteen years ago, and, and remember, it's a townhome, and it was newly built when we bought it. And then within a few years, the market just went crazy, and, and now, I mean, I don't even know if it's, you know, I don't know who can afford to, well, I've seen people move into our neighborhoods, but I don't know if, right now, even though it's, it's great for us, it's also a huge burden on other people that are trying to move to this neighborhood, into this city. The one thing that I noticed, it keeps bumping out the price, is the quality of the schools in here. And, I mean, that can be helped, if, you know, people want to be here in Falls Church City. We don't, unfortunately, we don't have the critical number of housing that places like Arlington or Fairfax has. So I don't, I mean, you can only do so much with new units that are coming into the marketplace. I don't really have an answer. I don't really have an answer. Just wanted to, but I like, I like what you presented, and I think it's really sobering, but it's really going to have to take some, I guess, great political will to answer the question that you posed to us. Thank you.
It's not only going to take political will, but it's going to take the availability of some less expensive units, and where we're going to find those, I really don't know. You've mentioned ones who don't qualify. How many people so far have been able to qualify? Because the drawing is on the twenty-seventh, right?
The drawing is on the twenty-seventh. The, sorry, the deadline was extended a little bit, a couple of days, just because we don't, we have, we have units that's, we, well, I haven't been, I haven't been here since last week.
We've had applicants for the--
Up his mic, Dana.
Hi, Dana Lewis, Housing Program Analyst. We've had applicants for the sixty percent units, but we've had difficulty with the hundred percent. We don't have any applicants that qualify for that one, and the eighty percent. So, we know that we'll be able to fill the sixty percent and eighty percent, but the hundred percent is going to be a problem. And we've had several applicants that know that Tenner Hill is coming online in April, and they, those units are going to be at sixty percent, and they have, you know, just flat-out said they want to wait and participate in that lottery because they, you know, can afford that lottery.
And how long--
And there are one-bedrooms at Tenner Hill and at, you know, South, what is it?
West Broad.
West Broad residences that are both one-bedrooms that are going to cost more for the hundred percent units that are the same size, you know what I mean? Depending on your income, it's based on your income. So, that's a problem, so people want to--
And then, if we don't occupy them, we lose them?
We lose them. They become market rate.
Market value.
So, it'll be anybody that comes in the door that, whose income is a hundred percent would qualify for those units. So, we would prefer not to do hundred percent units ever again.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask, does this mean that really we need to set a goal that the units we get pretty much be at sixty percent?
Sixty percent.
At the most.
And we, and as he's shown, we need some for less than that. I mean, you know, one of the things we've been talking about is, I mean, we have Harris Teeter, and we have Fresh Market, the new grocery store, and then a possible another grocery store, and where are all those employees supposed to live? They're going to be way below sixty percent. So, I mean, that's a lot of employees coming into the city, and they're going to have to commute from somewhere.
Of course, I'm so--
Not going to afford to be able--
I'm so concerned about the teachers, also.
Teachers, all of it.
With their salaries, they can't afford to even do the affordable housing, which is really scary.
I guess, I'm just looking at your discussion questions, and I think we do want to be inclusive. We want to be able to have the people that work in our community live in our community as much as possible. But, I mean, I also, I mean, I have plenty of friends who commute more than an hour to work.
I do.
Yeah, I mean, it's part of the, it's part of the issue with being inside the Beltway as we are, that there is, I mean, there is a limit to how much housing there is here. Even with the amount of housing we're building, it doesn't seem to be enough, and that, I mean, so we have those market forces, and just like Kofa was saying, my house, we bought it in two thousand and one, and it's more than double value since then. Even when we had the downturn, it hardly lost any value, and it turned right around in about a year after that. So, it's, I mean, it's really hard to fight against it, but it sounds like one of the things we need to do is, when we do get ADUs, we have to say they have to be sixty percent.
That would be great.
And so, we have to at least, what we do get, we need to have at the right level. And it is kind of scary because the affordable apartments, or semi-affordable apartments, we do have the garden-style apartments in places like Merrill House. You hear rumors that people are looking at to develop it, because it's, again, you know, nice-sized properties inside the Beltway. And so, I guess one of the things we need to, I mean, I think we're doing what we can to try to keep those, but that's, that would be a really big goal, is to keep what we do have.
Something else your data showed was that, I know we've got some very expensive condos, but we really need, I think, less expensive condos. Maybe we just need to look at different types of housing also. Not only condos, but, I don't know, there's got to be something. It's, or, it's, as you said, sobering.
Well, it is certainly an intractable problem. You did an excellent job. What's your day job? What's your--
I work at a grocery store.
Really?
I do, I do indeed, yeah. I've been working with Wegmans for ten years, and have been fortunate enough to work my way through school, so--
Well, that's true.
This is my passion, this is what I'm in school for, I'm not in school to be. And I think when we look at point number two, economic and business development, I have a job, I'm working my way through school so that I can eventually do something else. And when, when we open up grocery stores in Falls Church, those people, I believe, should have that opportunity to attend these schools, because what message does that say when we say, "You can, you can come and work here," but, you know, the schools, I don't know about that. So, when, when I'm preparing this, when I'm studying this, that's what I'm thinking about, because that's me. I've, I've been fortunate enough to get a full-time job, and I can live relatively close to where I work, which has allowed me to be in school. So, it's, it's personal, I think.
Yeah, I thought just occurred to me, I know DC has embarked on some really good affordable housing policies. I was talking to a contractor friend of mine who's actually involved in building some of these houses with developers. I don't know what the formula is. Have you looked into--
I do, yeah. So, for DC, they, any rezoning, or, is that right? Any redevelopment project has to include twenty percent affordable housing. In Falls Church, we get about six percent.
Six percent?
Yeah.
We used to have a twelve, we used to have a twelve percent policy. I don't know what happened.
That's what the ideal was. It's never been achieved.
It's never met.
It's never been achieved.
So, we've just let it go. So, the policy is still there, but we're, we're accepting six percent.
I think the policy was changed to reflect what the reality was.
Oh, was it?
It was twelve percent, but it was never even close.
Yeah, no, I know it was.
And when we're subsidizing units that are at market rate and labeling them workforce units, what's the point? Like, honestly, because we found that we can't get the applicants. So, we, if we truly want affordable housing, then we need deeper, deeper subsidies, so. I think that's where the political will comes in, and that's where, where the identification of need is important, is going and talking to people at Harris Teeter, asking them, "Where do you live? How far is your drive? What time do you wake up? If the store is open at six, you're probably waking up at three." So, it's that type of questions that I think I would like to get at in this chapter.
Retention, I think one of the commissioners mentioned, retention of existing affordable housing becomes ever more crucial, because it's not on a timeline in terms of, the ones we get through redevelopment are on a twenty-year timeline typically.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We could spend more time on this, but it's ten o'clock.
I'll be back.
And so, we've got to keep moving. All right. Mr. Snyder, proposed changes to office parking regulations in the zoning ordinance. So, I feel like we can't do this in fifteen minutes, although I like seeing things that are only fifteen minutes. I had just a ton of questions, so, all right, go ahead. Go ahead.
Well, these are both areas that we have talked a lot about needing to make changes to, and we've done parking studies that look at what the actual usage is in some of the office areas, and also changes to the B zones, which this commissioner's talked about as well, uses we'd like to clean up, get rid of, or modify. So, we've taken a shot at that, and Susan has been doing a really good work, along with our zoning administrator and other staff, to put something together for city council to consider, but certainly they want your input as well.
So, what are we going to do in fifteen minutes?
What I thought I could do in fifteen minutes was just run through the seven items that we are proposing to make changes, and then get any questions you have. I don't have a PowerPoint, you have copies of a PowerPoint. You should also have a copy of the report that describes each of the items in somewhat more detail. I think when we talked to you the last time, when I came back, I think it was in May, we were getting ready to do the surveys, and what we found when we went out into the field was, in fact, what we've expected to find, which is that there are more vacant spaces than most of us realized. The Flower Building being the notable exception, but even at that, it had considerably fewer spaces in use at various times of day than even people in the office thought. So, with that in mind, we also compared to adjacent jurisdictions, we looked at some specific projects, and right now, our thinking is that instead of the one-to-two-hundred, one-to-four-hundred, one-to-three-hundred kind of ratio that's being used, we think you could go as low as one per four-fifty, which is actually on slide five in the handout. I'm not going to go through each of these. Part of the reason that it's important to reduce the parking at this juncture, yes, you're getting development, yes, it's mostly residential, but the office market is starting to come back a little tiny bit, but what you have are parking spaces that are really just sitting empty. It's not money well-spent, the spaces aren't being used by anybody other than those doing business on the site, because your ordinance doesn't provide for that. So, the dollars that are going into parking at roughly twenty to forty to sixty thousand dollars a space, depending on how deep or how high, could be used for other purposes like affordable housing, or something else perhaps. So, when you look at one per four-fifty, you're well within range of East Falls Church, your neighbor, and non-TOD locations in nearby Fairfax County. So, those are some things to keep in mind. But we wouldn't make that be the byright standard. Our proposal, or the thing that we're considering, would be that that would be available to someone coming forward, applying for a special exception, and subject to the approval of a demand management plan. Now, you all are aware of the various techniques that go into a demand management plan, but the two together, the reduction with that as helping to mitigate the cars on the street, the uses on site, and so forth, we think is a good balance. In addition to the plan implementation, we would expect the developers to do monitoring of what is actually happening in their parking. So, we would get some real data over time that would help fine-tune the ratio, perhaps lower it more, perhaps change it, perhaps not be as generous, but the idea is that there would be actual, on-the-ground information coming in at reasonable intervals, and as Fairfax County is doing in its TDM programs, mitigation if there's a failure. So, if, for example, they don't implement the measures consistently that they've proposed in the plan, and it's been approved, the idea is that they would have to mitigate it. The third area that we've looked at, and I think you've all experienced, is parking garage design. Jim and I spent many years bumping into columns in the Courthouse Plaza garage, at least I did, and--
Always after a late meeting.
Always after a late meeting, right? And these pictures are from that garage, but these are examples, these are real-life examples of what you find in many parking garages. Obstructions that literally reduce the available area for a car. So, what we're suggesting is requiring that the width be widened to nine feet, which is more consistent with the typical vehicle today, once you open the doors, that the spaces not be allowed to be encroached upon if they're going to be counted toward the parking requirement, and that no obstructions be allowed, you know, on either side. So, we have a design that we've worked out, that's actually done in a couple of garages that I've been in, where there's an actual barricaded off area for the column. It requires the developer's engineer to lay the garage out a little bit differently. But again, if you've had the option to reduce your number of spaces, you can get more good spaces that meet requirements in a lesser area. The fourth area that we're looking at is parking space conversion. Right now, there really isn't a way for somebody to come in and say, "I want to convert a couple of parking spaces to bicycle storage racks, electric charging stations, you name it." It may be happening on the fly, but there's no process that allows them to do it. What we're proposing is something that would be allowed both for new construction and for existing surface lots. It would be administratively approved by the zoning administrator, subject to some documentation and material being provided on record. And I think one of the things that we're discussing is, when there's a change of tenancy, how would that be managed? And we have to work out the details on that. Obviously, it's a lot easier for new construction than it is for an existing situation, and we're also talking with the city attorney about how to deal with situations that may be non-conforming, but still would like to do, you know, the right thing by putting in some bike racks. Another area that we're looking at is review of parking modifications. Currently, a hardship test allows someone to go forward to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and I think you had a deferral this evening of something just like that. What we're suggesting in this revision would be that all parking-related modifications come through you all, rather than BZA for some things, planning commission for others. The goal there is to get a more consistent application of county, of city policy, but also to get a more holistic view of what's happening on the property in question. Then we have two areas that we have not discussed with the city council, but we know that there is some interest in at least this next one, and that's bicycle parking. Interestingly enough, most of the neighboring jurisdictions around here don't have bike requirements in their code. They actually do it largely by policy or through their VCs or standard conditions or something like that. But what we're suggesting is actually putting in the ordinance bicycle parking requirements for office development, for both people coming to work there and customers or visitors. And so, if you look on slide twelve, you will see what we are considering at this point in time. And these are non, it doesn't say it on this slide, but these are actually the same standards that are being used in Fairfax for non-TOD, non-urban center office locations. So, they have been tested and found to be pretty close to what, you know, what makes sense and what is good practice. Last but not least, off-site parking term. This is one that we just started discussion of a couple of weeks ago. Right now, the ordinance requires a thirty-year agreement, and I, I'm sorry?
How many times is that?
I believe none. I'm not really sure about that, but I think most of us will agree, there's very few things we would commit to for thirty years, particularly when it involves property and someone else's use of it. So, what we're suggesting is five years, or the length of the lease, whichever is greater. Obviously, it can be renewed, and there would be a kick-out clause if the property that has granted the right to park goes under redevelopment, which could easily happen today. The burden would be on the person who needs the parking to find a replacement for that parking. So, those are the seven areas, and I'm happy to take any questions that you may have.
Just to go back to your last statement, the burden would be on the company or whatever who needed the parking--
Correct, to replace it.
And what would be the, what would be the stick on that? I mean, if they couldn't find any other parking, what would happen? Would they, would they then be out of conformance with our parking zone, and we could find them, or, you know, what's--
I think there's a, there's a couple of different scenarios that could occur, but I think fundamentally, the zoning administrator would have to look at whether their business could, you know, lose their certificate of occupancy if they can't meet minimum requirements. But I think before you get to that stage, there is probably going to be some other options. They could request a reduction, they could consider, you know, if there's other ways that they can make their requirement, if their actual use is something different than what, you know, what the code would require for them. So, they could avail themselves of some of these other options that are in here, including the TDM.
But, but if our code was, was changed so that they needed less parking, even though they had built their building years before our code was changed, they could maybe petition to have their parking requirements reduced.
Yes, I believe they could.
Yeah, okay.
I believe that's the way it would be worded.
Yeah. My other question is, well, I have two. I've noticed, we talk a lot about bicycle sharing, or whatever that's called.
Bike share.
Bike shares. Yeah, and, and having those-- And having those included in our developments. I've seen a couple of places where they have the bike share actually in a parking space on the street as opposed to on the sidewalks. I think that would be so much better for us because, you know, you put something on the sidewalk in any of these developments that we're doing, and, you know, we're looking for 20-feet sidewalks. So you put those bike racks in there, it's gone. So I think that should be something that we should put forward as a possibility. If we're pushing for this bike share thing, they should be able to do it on the street. And the city should agree that that can be part of the project. And then the third question is, I always look at something like the Sherrlington parking as one of the best compromises in the area, where during the day, yes, everybody's got reserved parking, but in the night and on the weekends, they don't. So how can we bring something like that into the city with each development that we do?
You could include that in the demand management sort of portfolio of things that you're willing to look at. It's a form of shared parking, and then they have the smart parking technology that lets you know in some of the garages how many spaces are available and so forth, so you're not driving around. Because that's half the problem, is people circling for that one space.
Right. And is that something that we can include in whatever it is we're proposing?
In the TDMs, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, we certainly want to have anybody that's going to use a garage, you know, that is available in the mix.
Right. And I think the point is to maximize the use of that reduced number of spaces, not to balkanize them such that people are driving around looking for other places. If I can just go back to your comment about bike share? We're talking about two different things, I think. The bike share, that's the Capital Bike Share program, has a whole set of rules about where they can go. And they will go on easements on private property and so forth, and in the street. What we're talking about is a business owner or an office building that has a garage wanting to put up bike racks.
Okay.
Either within or on their premises, as opposed to in a public right of way.
Well, I just think that the bike share going on the street is something that we should be looking at on a regular basis.
Sure. It works very well in the district.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, so in the interest of time, I read this, I had a lot of questions. I am prepared to keep an open mind. I would say what's really missing, and I'm not going to get into, you know, the last time I went to the Tax Analyst Building, I couldn't find a parking space, because like, that's not that interesting. But I am moderately skeptical that we really have this great surplus of parking. That has not been my experience. And I will tell you that I think the data that I don't have here is where the cheater parking is going. And so Andy and I live in a place where we see every morning at sometime around 6:30 to 7:30, 20 cars parking on Little Falls and Jefferson. And some of those are construction workers, some of them take the metro, some of them work, you know, in other buildings and they're commuting in. They use it like-
Like go there and then get on their bikes and ride the rest of the way?
They, yeah. Some people ride their bikes from the W and O D there. But you can just stand in front of Andy's house and watch the cars line up and start parking up and down Little Falls. And so I read this, and I started thinking about other traffic studies I've seen and parking studies in my work. I just did some work up in Tenley Town. Jamal's developed a building, it has no parking. And they had to do a very extensive study as to where all the people were going to park, because theoretically, someone's got a car, right? Even though they are, you know, walking distance 200 feet, well, no, 500 feet from a metro station, they still had to demonstrate, like, where the people could park. So it wouldn't be back in the neighborhoods. And I just am, I promise you I will be open-minded, but I am hugely skeptical that people don't have cars and we're going to put bikes there and all of a sudden they're going to ride their bike. You know, I used to work in Tyson's Corner. I love riding my bike. You cannot ride your bike into Tyson's Corner. I don't care if they built a gold-plated cage for me to put my bike in. You could, you can't go there. You can, I can see it, I'm going there, but I got a bike, and I'm not taking my bike on that route. You know, I just, I don't know. I just, so, I'm open-minded, that's all I got.
I just want to point out, I think that the people who park on Little Falls are commuters trying to figure out a way to get to work and probably aren't interested in parking in the Tax Analyst Building or any other building.
It's more, I allude to that.
Okay.
Because it's more complicated, I think. I think this is much, much more complicated.
No, no, I think it is more complicated. I don't park in the garage at, when I go to Mad Fox, I park on Park Avenue because it's quicker.
Right.
Not because I can't find parking, there's plenty of parking in the Mad Fox.
Not as soon as there used to be.
So when Tanner Hill gets built-
I rarely have to go too far down.
When Tanner Hill gets built, I am fascinated to figure out where people really park. If there's a hot restaurant, as they're hoping that they have one, how many people use their garage? I mean, it's an interesting question.
Not much. I don't know. I use garages all the time because I have to use a garage for work. So I don't have, and I've used some horrible garages for work, so I've learned how to deal with the columns. But I just, you know, I don't have trouble parking. I've not had trouble parking in Tax Analyst at night or during the day. I've not had trouble, like I said, I don't park in the garage at Mad Fox because I don't feel like going in the garage.
Because you're a cheater. We've identified you as a cheater parker.
I am a cheater.
Which is what my, which was my point. I just need more data.
Coming from my house, it's-
They're parking on a public street, which is open to the public.
But-
And there's always parking spaces there. It's just faster from my house. That's what I hit first.
However-
But I'm just, I don't know. I just want to say, people say this all the time, it's the same thing with the Flower Building. I've always been able to park in the Flower Building if I want to park in the Flower Building.
Not at Christmas.
But, you know what? I work in Old Town, and so we seem to have a whole bunch of parking compared to what I'm used to at work.
But this is the kind of thing I'm worried about with Mason Row, is people not wanting to use their garage or not wanting to have to pay to use the garage and using street parking. But why don't you have permit parking only on Little Falls?
Because here's what you do. Go to where, wherever it is in the city where the permit parking stops, right at that sign, so it'll say permit parking, going this way, right at that sign, there will be cars there. Not cars from the neighborhood. And, you know, it's walkable, and when the weather's lovely, I think people who are going to Mad Fox know that they can park on Park, or they can park on Pennsylvania or wherever, which is not the end of the world. But I think there's, I'm alluding to the fact, I think there's more going on here. This is a more complicated topic.
I will say, though, it's, you know, car storage is very expensive. Very expensive. And that's really what parking is, is car storage. And, for example, the Spectrum Building, I always try to use the garage, there are many, many spaces down there. I think better, fewer spaces, better designed, with more information about what's actually available, is what this is about. And then putting the control and the conditions in front of the planning commissioner who is looking at the entire project is part of what this is about. And if we do want to have offices here, we're not going to get them if we're requiring twice what everybody else is requiring, and in fact, they aren't needed. This is really saying, you have to be much more proactive about parking, you have to manage it, you have to have systems to make it work, and it can work. But right now, a lot of money is being spent to dig holes, and these lower sub-basements in many cases are vacant. District Columbia has gone through this. When you go look at the spaces, there's a lot of vacant space.
We are, I'm only speaking for myself, willing to be open-minded on this. I will tell you that I-
There are changes, I mean, people, for example, have adapted to grocery stores with structured parking, where, and even Tyson's Corner, which at one point people said, no one will ever go in a garage.
Yeah, it's, yeah, you're, you got it. But I will tell you, the Spectrum is a difficult garage.
Oh, yeah.
But it's so easy to park on the street.
But see, that's a good point. You could have fewer spaces in the Spectrum garage, but know you can park in them, right? And then I think more people will go down there. Because I think right now, you go down, you're like, I'm just going to take two spaces because it's a lot of-
Better spaces, wider spaces, better column arrangement, better lighting, and knowing that you can actually find out what's vacant because, through the smart technology.
Right.
That's what this is about.
Okay. Next item?
Did we, did you consider looking at parking meters for the streets?
I have not looked at parking meters for the streets. I was actually shocked to find there weren't any.
Yes.
But I have, that has not been part of this study.
I think it's time.
It may be time.
It had a moment of controversy, and it seemed to have tainted it ever since then. Aaron McKeever, once, it was like you were suggesting that, which I never completely got, but it was some kind of, he might have had a religious kind of a situation.
But he wanted a parking.
Well, you have a competitive advantage in that regard right now, because they're everywhere else.
Yeah, I also think technology has made parking meters a lot easier to implement.
That's for sure. A lot fewer holes to dig.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
B uses?
B uses?
Procession. Item E.
The uses.
One more item. Oh, no.
I'm sorry.
And you have to get enthused about, these are things you want.
No, 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 no.
I just want to say, I'm excited that we're looking at parking. I'm with you.
And we have a part two, which is residential, multi, multifamily, that is.
Yeah.
Okay, B uses. This amendment was actually drafted by the zoning administrator and addresses some recommendations that were prepared in 2011 and brought to the city in the Zoac final report. And it is proposing a couple of things. One is to take several byright uses and move them into the special exception category, and that includes churches, parish houses, and similar religious facilities. That would put you in line with most of your neighbors having those be special exceptions. And then schools and daycare facilities that are complying with the provisions of the state code. And my understanding is that this is private schools as opposed to public schools. The second component of this is to change the reference in the M1 industrial zone. Currently, it allows any principal use permitted in B3, which is a broader commercial zone. And the recommendation is to change that to B2, which is more restrictive. So that would tighten down some of the kinds of uses that can happen.
Such as gas stations?
I believe that is one of them, yes. The third area is just a sort of a minor change, which is to delete the word railroad in M1. And this is related to the WOD trail and just a cleanup to get that squared away. And then the last item is in the sign section of the zoning ordinance, and it has to do with businesses being able to request second-floor signage. Currently, there isn't an avenue for that. This was very important for the two-level shopping center over on Hillwood that had the fire to re-tenant. So we're recommending that that be included as well. And that is that.
I do have a question about that second-floor parking.
Signage.
Signage. Or parking, you know, whatever.
We moved on from parking.
Yes. Does this change the sign ordinance?
Yes, it's an amendment to the sign ordinance.
Okay, so if you have a second-floor sign, can it be neon?
It can be any material that is currently allowed in the ordinance, and neon, I believe, is an approvable material.
I think, well, when I was on the AAB, neon was verboten. So I don't know if they've changed it or not.
I'll double-check that. I'm not positive.
I'm just thinking a whole bunch of second-story signs that are neon are going to look like Tokyo.
No, I love that, though.
I do, too.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
It's okay.
Those signs, by the way, were granted by variance, and it was, the tenant, teneting of that second floor was, for many people, was very dependent on getting signage.
Right. Well, you know, the other thing is-
It was really crucial.
We also see, I think we prohibit, like, hang-in signs, like, if you're on the first floor, don't we?
Can we, can we make people take down their, like, for lease signs that are all over every office building that's ever been built in town and apartment building?
Building that you work?
Yeah, my for lease building I'm in, all of them, all the apartment buildings, it's like forever, permanent, temporary signs about, is there, is there rules in place already?
Well, there are rules, and those have been taken down on complaint.
I can take them down, I mean, I got a pocket knife.
One technique that's used in places is kind of a comprehensive sign plan where, you know, you get to see the whole package.
Okay, well-
Except, you know, I can give you 10 examples where what was a brilliant comprehensive sign plan in 1999, you look at it now and you go, what, who, what were we thinking about there?
Understood.
It's kind of like a mullet.
Yes. Well, so-
It's the moral equivalent.
It's like the front of the Broadway.
With that comment in mind, I would like to say, is there any way we can get rid of the sandwich signs that are proliferating all over town?
I believe you-
Sandwich signs.
Well, that's a whole nother issue.
Okay.
And how would, okay, so-
And those, most of those are not, if they're put up temporarily, many of them are not permitted.
Yeah.
So on complaint basis, we're going after those.
I think on the second-story signs, though, just the subject that we're on, I think it's a good idea to allow them within the parameters that we already have, which I think we have some pretty strict rules on how this goes anyway.
Yeah, your sign ordinance is very strict.
We also, we also had the commission interested in having us have a minimum of two-story buildings in the B zones, if you recall. And that second story, if that were to happen, really needs, may need signing, that's what-
Yeah.
Yeah. No, I agree. I just was wondering about the neon, because I remember that was a-
And I thought the other zoning changes that we've talked about, like the change of taking railroad out and changing the M1, I think all these are really good things that would clean up some real loopholes that we have currently. So I just think the whole thing makes sense.
Okay.
I'd like to see us start cleaning up little things.